Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing for Town of South Windsor for Tuesday, April 27th, 2021. Our first thing is we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone could please rise, salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask the Secretary to read the notice.
Frank, you're on mute.
Is that better?
That's much better, thank you.
I'm sorry. To be published in the Journal of Choir Thursday, April 15th, 2021, and Thursday, April 22nd, 2021, South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, April 27th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, held by way of an online WebEx conference meeting to consider the following. One, application 21-19P, Town of South Windsor Farmer's Market, request for a two-year temporary conditional permit to operate the Farmer's Market weekly from May 22nd to September 25th, 2021, on properly located at 220 Nevers Road RR Zone. Number two, application 21-11P, REESG Newco South Windsor LLC, request for a zone change from General Commercial Zone GC to Sullivan Avenue Mixed Use Development Overlay Zone SAMUD of 19 plus or minus acres, and general plan of development for renovation of 60,740 square foot of commercial space, and a development of 125 apartment units on property known as Sullivan Avenue Plaza, located at 959 1017 and 1079 Sullivan Avenue GZ Zone. This has been continued from April 13th, 21. To view this meeting, please tune into channel 61. If your provider is caught, I don't believe my tier is on. Or you can go to gmedia.SWAGIT.com/live. To call in with comments to this meeting, please call WebEx Conference Call-in Number 855-925-2801. What is the meeting code, Bart?
The meeting code?
8645. So 855-925-2801, 8645. Copies of the application are on file in the Office of the Town Clerk in Planning Department and online at www.southwindsor CT.gov/PlanningDepartment-Pages/PlanningAndZoningCommissionApplications. At this hearing, interested parties may be heard by calling into the meeting, and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email to planningandzoningcomments@south windsort CT.gov. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, at 860-644-2511, extension 329. Bart Passakonis, Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you very much. I also have a few opening comments. This meeting is being livestreamed through a WebEx conference call on the town website, as well as local channels, and will be operated under the following procedures. The session is being audio recorded and video recorded. To ensure sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute, except when speaking or voting, and will generally be keeping video themselves on throughout the meeting. Applicants should feel free to leave their video on or off. However, they will be asked to turn on their video when speaking. The public can provide public comments by email and/or phone. Email address and phone number with the meeting code can be found on the front of the agenda. During public meetings, all the normal rules, including stating and now spelling your name, still apply. If you are speaking at this meeting, have an exhibit to submit to the commission, which has not been distributed in advance at the meeting with the rest of the materials. Please indicate that you wish to submit an exhibit. You will need to hold it up to the camera so that the commission and all the members of the public may review it. In addition, you will be required to email the exhibit or take a photograph of it and email it to planningzoningcomments@southwindsor.org, and it will be included in the permanent records of the commission. Members of the public may only speak during public participation for an item that is not on the agenda and during the public hearing comment period. Lastly, a reminder to the public on the phone to press star three to indicate that you want to speak, and the pound sign to get back to the main menu. Okay, our order of business tonight, well, first off, do we have any commissioners missing?
Commissioner Greer is not with you tonight, as I see.
Okay. I believe the last public hearing for this application, that Commissioner McGuire sat for Commissioner Greer. So if Commissioner McGuire is with us, we'll seat her for Commissioner Greer.
He's there.
Pardon me?
He is with us. If you can't see, he is here.
Okay. Our normal order of business is to first hear from the applicants, then we hear from town staff, then we hear from members of the public in favor and against, and then we hear from commissioners. So at this time, I will call the first application, which is application 21-19P, Town of South Windsor Farmer's Market. Do we have the applicant to present?
Yes, we should have John Caldwell and Molly Keys brought in to join us. There we go.
Okay. Awesome. Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. We are looking to present the Farmer's Market for a new location, which is number 220 Nevers Road. And just to give anybody listening or some bearings, it's a field directly, almost directly across from Ayers Road when you come down from the high school. It's going to be the back portion of the field towards the wood line that's there. You'll enter from Nevers Road up. It's probably about, I'm going to say, probably about 500 feet before you get to the parking lot that we are going to propose there. That's going to be just a grassy parking lot, and the parking will be alongside of the vendors that'll be there. So any type of handicap parking will be up on the grassy area right next to it. Yep.
Do you have an exhibit, John, or? Or no?
I do not. I can get one.
Yeah, I got one.
I thought Michelle had given that to all the commissioners.
Yeah, just thinking for the public.
No, I do not. I mean, I can, if I, if Mike could share my screen, I could probably, I could do that. I don't know if I can. And it's going to be a pretty grainy picture. I have, I do have this that will show something that's showing the roadway up, our proposed berm, and then there's some sketching on there. I know it's not exactly what you're looking at, but the, the parking area, I'm having a hard time seeing here, will be up in this portion of the, well, I'm all backwards here. Up towards this portion of the field here, towards the wood line. I can get a better photo of that.
The idea surely is that we would have parking, once you get off of the road, it'd be parking on the side, and then towards the back would be the Farmer's Market in order to kind of push the market more towards the open field area in Nevers, and that is to kind of be able to expand our market, but also put the noise further back as well. So we're not really right on top of the baseball fields or the housing that's over there. But this, this move would give us the capacity to be able to expand the market for the community, and it will also kind of give more of a family-friendly feel as, you know, they'll be able to walk around without worrying about the street that would be next to the former location of the Farmer's Market. I think John's going to print out a picture right now.
All right, I was looking to print a picture of it. I do have the layout. Yeah, the, the area, the parking spaces, areas, is approximately 320 feet long. It's, it's more of a, it's more of an L shape or a stick, and then the vendors, we're going to try and place so that, we're going to look at COVID and some restrictions and try and spread them out a little bit more. The current market had approximately, I believe, 32 vendors. I don't know if we'll have that right off the bat. The, we do have a berm proposed, so it'll give Windermere Court a little bit of a barrier, that berm on the north to south view is going to be about 125 feet, and then the other direction is, well, I'm sorry, north to south is 200 feet, east to west is about 125 feet. We're looking to make it about three feet high, the berm. We don't want something too tall because I think that the one thing that Windermere Court would like is that there's a nice view of the sunrise when you come up there, and we don't want to block too much of that. We had talked about planting trees on top of it. That was one thing that, you know, if I live there, I think if some people live there, they don't want something that's going to grow up too big. So what we would like to propose is persythia there. It's a nice color in the spring, and then, and then it leaves out something that we can control and keep the height to a reasonable height. So it still blocks some of what's going on, but still gives them a nice view of what is going on. And I did print that map. I can run to the, hopefully to the printer if you would like.
Sure.
I think the printer's not far away at my age. All right. Here's what we're looking at. This is, the layout for the vendors is, is a little up in the air. We've tried a different, couple different configurations. That does show a roadway going all the way up and around. We do not plan on doing that, because we have a nice grass area up there. We have overseeded it recently in the spring. We're hoping to get a little bit better than the farm rye that's there. The roadway is going to go probably just past, and when I say roadway, it's just a process-type gravel driveway just past the parking area that's there. And then the berm is going to, well, the berm, you can actually see a little bit better, the proposed berm in this photo here.
Yep.
And like I said, and then, one of the things that we thought about doing, and we are going to talk to the, the people at Windermere Court, is that someone had suggested that they want a small opening in that berm to possibly walk through to attend the Farmer's Market. So, you know, that's another thing that's, we thought of. A couple other things is that, you know, water is going to be a little bit different issue because we're a little further from the community center than we were. We are going to try and get some, well, we are going to get some handwashing stations or, or some potable water type over there that you can clean. We are going to probably have to use port-alets over there. We did look into a couple different options of rentals, but we don't, we think, we got to see how the market goes to see what our, our funding, our revenue source will be to see what we can generate from this. We're hoping to grow the market. It's a larger area. We got a lot of, we have a new person that's going to actually manage the market along with our staff, Molly and myself. It's Jenny Thurl, and I may be pronouncing her last name incorrectly, but I think that's close. And Jenny, I apologize if I did. She's very excited about it, so are Molly and I, and Cheryl Gerber's been helping with this. But we're pretty excited about it, and we think it's something that the town will enjoy. Well, they have in the past anyway, so we're hoping to continue that.
Right, we're really hoping to make it more of a community focus for our families on the weekends so they could be there for longer periods of time, see more local businesses coming through in future years, you know, go from 35 to maybe 50 vendors, and be able to have some, you know, small live music or small entertainment there. Just, just a variety of things that can bring the community together in a new way and kind of promote our local businesses.
Absolutely. But I, I think one of the, one of the big benefits of this location change is that we were dealing with a very small plot of land before, over by the Boundless Playground. It had its advantages because it was next to the playground, and the parents and the kids, you know, there was a, there was a good flow of things there. But we're dealing with a much larger area. That, that area between parking and, and the vendors is probably about 3.5 acres, where we were dealing with a little, with under an acre before. People had to park across the street, they had to cross the road. The vendors were parking on the sidewalk. One of the other things that we were cognizant of is that you will have to cross the sidewalk here with a vehicle, so we are going to put some different signs on the sidewalks as, you know, caution pedestrians and caution cars. So, so both parties involved, whether it's someone walking down the sidewalk or a car, will realize that, you know, there is something that possibly a car or pedestrian may be coming. And I, I think with that, you know, the other thing is that, is that we also have a trail that accesses, this is going to be difficult because I'm not a backwards person. You can't, you can't really see it in this map, but I'm going to try and do this with my hand. Right here, there actually is a trail that connects this other field with the Farmer's Market over here. So there is a large grassy area. It's actually a very wide trail up through here that connects these, and it also connects this walking path with that. So other people can come. It's not very far from the, from the bark park, so I think it'll be a good area. Let me say, I hope it will be.
Okay. Does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Okay. Then at this time, we will turn to our town staff, our Director of Planning, Michelle Leit.
Thank you. So this is a request for a two-year temporary conditional permit for the Farmer's Market to be sponsored by the South Windsor Parks and Recreation Commission, southern portion of the field located at 220 Nevers Road in the rural residential zone. This year, the market's proposed to be from May 22nd through September 25th. Market startup time is 8:00 AM, and the market runs from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. As in previous years, the market will feature items grown by local farmers, vegetables, fruits, flowers, honey, cheeses, specialty products and from local farms, and live entertainment will be featured as well. So you've been provided a map that shows the layout that they're proposing, as well as the berm. So they're showing a parking area that shows 160 spaces that will be a grassed area. We've asked the Parks Department to consider making sure that we have a safe passage for anybody that might be coming up from Nevers Road, whether it's boarding off through a rope or something, or anybody that's coming from the community center to make sure there's an easy, clear path to the park. The berm that's being proposed will be 50-foot, in the 50-foot berm area that's required under our buffer requirements, and they're proposing to plant it with persythia, which will, as John said, add some nice color in that area in the springtime. All the vendors are subject to the health code requirements. If they're offering any food or, or samples, and they're responsible for filing with our health department to obtain all the necessary permits, and our health department does perform inspections of the booths prior to the opening of the season. Temporary signage is permitted for civic nonprofit groups. They will need to obtain, obtain signed permits from our office. The wording of the temporary conditional permit is that temporary conditional permits may be granted by the commission for a period not to exceed two years. Such approval may be given after a public hearing. In the judgment of the commission, the public convenience and welfare will be substantially served, and the appropriate use of neighboring property will not be substantially or permanently injured, and traffic in other parts which will not result in abuse. I know this has been a very popular thing in the past, and I know everybody missed it last summer, so we're glad to see the Parks Department pick it up and, and offer it again this year. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just comment that we left a curb cut to this field when we redid that section of Nevers Road across the sidewalk. And the sidewalk, I believe, is reinforced there, so I would hope they would use that curb cut for access to and from the Farmer's Market. And my understanding is, this is all grass because it's the first year they're doing it here, so they want a lot of flexibility to be able to shift things around as it best suits the needs of the Farmer's Market, and I certainly understand that.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask town staff if there's anyone on the line calling in for public comment. Okay. Do we have any letters to read into the record for this application?
No letters received.
Okay. Then at this time, I will turn to the commissioners. Commissioner Bonzani.
I just want to say it looks like a great opportunity to get the Farmer's Market back. Everybody really liked it. And it looks like a great location, it's bigger. I think it's going to be bigger and better. I'm totally, totally for this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dexter.
I agree with Commissioner Bonzani. It looks like a great plan, and I fully support.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Flag.
John, I only had one question for you. And I totally agree with the other commissioners, and I think it's going to be a great thing. But on the old property that we have, it was right close to the road, and it was good for emergency vehicles could get there really fast. And it was adjacent to a MSI parking lot by the community center too, where the ambulance could park there or something like that. Are you going to have equal access for the emergency vehicles on this new piece of property?
Yes. The, the emergency vehicle, the roadway going up will probably be about 25 feet wide, which would actually, you could have two directions of traffic if needed. And there'll be plenty of room, like if the ambulance even wanted to park up there and sit. And actually, though, they, I think the maneuverability for them and through the vendors, if there were a problem inside one of the vendors, will be much better because there's going to be a lot more room there than there used to be in the old site. But yes, we should have plenty of room for them and access. And they can even, if they even had to, they could access it from Chief Ryan Way on the opposite side down the Stone Dust Trail.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Foley.
You're on mute. There you go.
The wait nine, Commissioner Foley. Can't wait to go back to the in-person meetings. Are you on, Commissioner Foley? Okay, we're going to come back to Commissioner Foley. Commissioner Wagner.
Good evening, thank you. First of all, I love to see the Farmer's Market get bigger. I think that's a, a great opportunity here. I've got to admit, I'm a little concerned about visibility. I mean, the, the previous location is confused and, you know, I don't know what the right word is, but there was all kinds of stuff going on right there at the road, and while that may be created a hazard in some people's minds, it also, you couldn't go past there without thinking, oh, maybe I should stop at the Farmer's Market. So I hope you're going to have a lot of signs that, first of all, at the old location, just point people to the new location and just, everybody to be aware that, okay, today's the Farmer's Market Day because now you're in a pretty hidden location. So I'm a little worried about that. But that's a decision that's up to the Farmer's Market. It's not a zoning issue. I do have some questions. How is that land in a, you know, on a heavy rainy day? How's that going to perform? For the parking and for the, and for the vendors?
Well, that's why we seeded it, so we're hope, we're going to be able to make it better than it was. The vendors is a pretty, is a pretty dry area. When you get over towards the corner of the parking on one side, and it's going to be the, the southeast, southwest corner, it, it could get a little wet over there if we push too close to the woods, but, you know, we're going to, we're going to keep seeding it, we're going to keep planting into it. I mean, it was on a long area before. The more we drive on it, the more it will become compacted, so I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, it'll be okay for us. And it's not going to rain.
Okay. Can we put that as a, can we put that as a condition in our approval?
Right, and we're going to make it so much bigger. People from other towns are going to come to this. They're going to be like, wow, what is going on there?
Yeah, we're going to have fantastic advertisement, and, you know, we're planning on looking at different signs and different ways to get the words out, whether that's social media or by word of mouth as well, so.
Okay. My next question has to do with ADA. I, I, you know, I tried to measure with my ruler how far the parking is from the actual vendor locations, and that's probably not an accurate picture anyway. But I want to make sure that, you know, someone in a, in a wheelchair will be able to get over to attend the market. How are we dealing with that?
You know, I think I, we're going to do everything we can for ADA accessibility. We are going to actually, we want to make some parking spots that are even closer to the vendors than what are shown on this parking lot, what are shown on this view. Bring them as close as we can. So, you know, that's something that I think we're going to work very diligently on to make ADA accessibility as convenient as we can, even though it's a rough location. But, you know, it, it's not on a hill, it's a flat surface. The old one was on quite a slope. So, yeah, we're, we're hoping to have good luck with that.
Yeah, I guess my feeling is anybody who could have gotten around in their wheelchair in the old Farmer's Market ought to find this as, as accessible as the old market. I realize it's grass, and not every wheelchair can navigate on all kinds of natural surfaces, but to the extent we can make it work for them, that's very important. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I, I think it's going to be a little tougher. You know, I think as the time goes on, we'll get a better standard of grass in there, and we'll help things out a little, a lot more.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'll move on to Commissioner Bernstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No questions, just a couple comments. Number one, I am delighted to see that we're beginning to do things that feel and look normal again. I'm excited about the Farmer's Market coming back, and I want to reinforce in terms of Commissioner Wagner's comments about advertising, I think this better be marketed aggressively. And while Molly, I understand that social media might be one way to do that. From my many, many trips to the Farmer's Market, I would question what percent of those folks are on social media. So it's, you know, just my way of saying, I think you need to look at marketing from 360 degrees to assure success, and everyone involved with this call wants this thing to be successful. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner LeBlanc. Thank you. Commissioner LeBlanc.
Mr. Chair, um, I'm in line with the whole group here. I think it's a. A great choice. It's a better expansion for the farmer's market. It's a good thing for the town and everyone here. Uh, my comments are in line with Commissioner Wagner, Commissioner Bernstein with the comments uh. I I realize that's old farmland. There's a lot of topsoil out there and I'm thinking that you're gonna have some issues with uh vehicles and people sinking. We got a couple days of rain. Uh, I asked, I actually footed through there one time or another in the past and you sink past your ankles in mud on a rainy day, but. Uh, it's not like you have sand or gravel underneath the short for a thin layer of topsoil. That's good, solid farmland there. It's gonna take a while to solidify out there. That's gonna be an issue with bad weather. The other comment I had, it certainly is uh marketing and I'm one of these people that. I just happened to drive down Sand Hill Road and I go, yeah, the farmer's market's going on and I go over and I, you know, I tend it, but. Now it's gonna be in a hidden spot and it certainly uh, I think physical advertising will go a long way with this. I'm not one on social media looking for farmer's markets either, but even though I use social media, it's not just one of the things I look for, but. Uh, I think some physical signs probably in the old location. Uh, directing people or at least on Ayers Road pointing straight ahead, and I think people eventually get used to it. I just hope that it's a quick transition for everybody to know that it's there, cause it is tucked away. Although it's a much better sight and certainly would. All the attention would surround the farmer's market at that new location. It is a good choice. Those are the comments I have. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and Commissioner McGuire.
Thank you, Bart. Um, yeah, I love the farmer's market too. Not only is it a great place to get fresh fruits and vegetables, it's. It's a gathering place. I I look forward to meeting people that I don't see, you know, during the week and it and I love it. But I do have a couple of questions for, just for clarification on a few things. So. Right now, there is no driveway there, correct? Uh, I think Jeff, you said that there is a curb cut?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Are there plans to create a driveway there?
Yes, what we, what we'd like to do, you know, it's not, it's just gonna be like a gravel driveway. It's not gonna be paved or anything like that. Yeah, we plan on bringing out about three hundred to three hundred and twenty-five feet from the road. Up to, up to the parking lot. It's gonna go. Uh, up up to the edge of the beginning of the parking lot where they'll enter. You see two locations. Uh, on the, one of the drawings that. On this drawing here, you'll see that the driveway that's proposed is gonna probably come up and end right about here. You know, if we have more material or more funds, we can bring it further up, but at this point. Uh, the material that we dig out is gonna be used for the berm. So the berm, the driveway, then we'll, then we'll put like a process type gravel in there. And uh harden that driveway up, so, you know, at least, you know, traffic. That's gonna be on the same path all the time will be a hardened path. That way, if we do have some rain issues, that'll take care of that problem.
Okay, and and would you expect, I know people aren't gonna be crossing there necessarily unless they're on the sidewalk. Would you expect to have people out there as you did with the the previous market kind of directing cars?
We do plan on doing that. I mean, we're, we're gonna put some signage. We might put some like. We call them pigtails or like a white long stake and they have circles in them to put some rope around them for maybe. Tell pedestrians, look, stay on this side, don't walk out in that path, so we do have some. Some ideas for that, but you know, once we lay things out and we see where things go. We'll probably have a better idea what we might have to manage and not have to manage.
And the road in, is it just going to be on the grass or is it gonna be gravel or?
No, we're, we're, we'll probably dig it down six or eight inches. Like I said, that material that we dig out of there will use to create the berm around Windermere Court and then we'll make it a gravel based road.
Okay, I see. And um, and on the porta potties. You sounded a little vague on that. Are you gonna have them or not?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have, we'll definitely have porta potties. You know, one of the things that we always keep looking at, but it's always, you know, how much money do we have? How much, what's in our budget? We would really like to purchase a portable bathroom. But that's something down the future. It's it's a self-contained bathroom like in a trailer. Um, it actually has water, hand washing stations and and lavatories, so, I mean. It's something that I think we could use for more than just this, but it's something that's not cheap either.
Yeah, I I'm familiar with those. Uh, I've, I've, I've experienced them at concerts. Um, and they're actually great. Some are even air-conditioned, you know, on the inside, but I imagine they're, they're, they're not inexpensive. Um, and then just lastly, the configuration. Now, is this just um, just a model on on? The shape here of how you're going to configure the vendors? Are you still experimenting with that?
Yeah, just base, it's based on social distancing as well, so we're gonna try to monitor how many vendors we have. What the space is needed, um, so that, you know, that's gonna vary. We might not have the thirty-five vendors that we had the previous year when it was running. And just due to COVID, we have people that aren't comfortable coming back yet to work at the market or be vendors. So we're just really gonna work out, once we know how many vendors we have, what the layout's going to look like in terms of spacing.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Bart?
Thank you. Uh, I'll turn to Commissioner Foley. Commissioner Foley, are you with us? Anybody see him?
Kevin, why don't you text, Kevin, why don't you just text me your questions?
He's there. He's having difficulty with his audio.
I hate it when that happens.
He is giving the thumbs up though.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, um.
Um, one, one other comment. I know that. Uh, once in a while, and and they haven't, they haven't moved yet, but the Strawberry Festival, I believe, is gonna take place this year. And it's June twelfth. Someone had sent me a question quick on that. Um, and we will not bang heads with the Strawberry Festival. We will not run that weekend, so. You know, I think there's enough going on in the park that weekend where we can uh just not run.
Okay, but that would be a different area location, no? I mean, you guys wouldn't conflict with parking or anything.
No, we wouldn't, but you know. Uh, for right now, we're gonna, we're gonna just, we're gonna try and avoid that because there's gonna be so much going on at the park. But then, on the other hand, someone had said, you know, it might be good to have it at that time because it might help with it. So, right now, it's, I guess I should say it's up in the air, but we weren't planning on doing it because we hadn't done it in the past.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, um. Handicap spaces ADA. Uh, do you know about how many you're gonna do? Are you gonna do like ten or so?
Uh, we hadn't really put a number on it yet, but you know, I I think that. If if we need ten, we can do ten. We can always add more because what we're gonna do is. We're gonna have some, some lines actually laid out in the lawn and we're gonna actually have portable signs on stanchions. And I think if we find we need more, we could, we could start out with a larger number, like you said, like ten. And if we reduce it down a little bit, we can, if if we don't have to, we don't have to, so you know, I think. You know, the, the community center, I think they had. A, the whole, a whole bunch of handicap parking over the parking lot, but it was an awful long ways away. So, I I don't exactly know what they need it required for a handicap. We can reach out to. The people that ran the old farmer's market and get a rough idea from them what they were using for spaces and we can build off of that.
Okay, and uh. How are you gonna have safety grasp? For like people walking or biking from Nevers? Are you gonna have like, I don't know, caution tape up? So cars are on one side, pedestrians are on the other? Anything like that, John?
Yeah, one of the things that we, one of the things that we talked about was even next to the road, even if we make it a little bit wider. Um, that's what the, those pigtails that I talked about, that you'll see them at, we use them at Nevers Park when we have a big event. They run a yellow rope through them and it's almost like a, like a barrier. We were like, we were thinking about doing something like that. Or even actually painting like a walk lane.
Yep, um, I like your idea of having the vendors. Uh, park totally away from the um attendees parking. Um, you know, I think that uh helps with keeping potential conflicts down. Um, and of course, vendors always wanna park as close as possible to where they're setting up. Other than that, um, I, I don't have anything else. Commissioners, uh, any other last questions, concerns?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yeah, um, you know, I was actually glad the question of bikes came up. Uh, I know over uh, um. On uh Ry Street, uh, the new park area there where we have the um lobbying fair. It's actually pretty hard to get in there with a bike without having to walk a a significant distance. Um, just a plain old dirt path next to the road, uh, not, not stone dust or anything. It probably uh. Uh, serve the bikers uh pretty well, just uh, you know, next to all the gravel. You can't ride your bike on that gravel. Uh, but uh next to the gravel, a dirt path uh would probably work for most of us bikers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? Uh, is there any reason to keep the public hearing open? Staff, any reason to keep it open?
No, chair.
Okay, is the applicant all set? Any parting comments?
No, I just wanna say thank you to everyone and uh I appreciate all the comments. Molly and I do.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing at seven forty-two PM and we will be addressing this. Uh, in our regular meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, our next. Uh, application twenty-one dash eleven P is a continuation. Uh, for the uh Sullivan, Sullivan Avenue Plaza. I'll just leave that acronym SAP for now. Um. Can we let those uh applicants in? And we'll first be going to public comment. Um, but once uh the applicants are in, I'm just gonna make a brief statement.
So Mike, do you wanna let Fuzzy Brown in? Greg Nanny? Don Poland? Robert Ryback? Tim Wentz? Dave Wagner? And Pussy Brown? Okay, I think you have everybody now, Chairman.
Okay, great. Um, we do have a lot of record, uh. Letters to read into the record. Um, and these rec, uh, letters are available online on the town website. For this application. Um, and I am gonna ask the uh secretary and the assistant secretary. Uh, to summarize the letters uh as best as possible uh when they're presenting them. Um, uh, but first, before we get into the reading. Uh, I'd like to ask town staff if there's anybody on the phone right now that would like to speak. We'll give them first opportunity. Okay, and I will repeat the number eight five five nine two five two eight zero one, meeting code eight six four five. Uh, and at this time, I will turn to uh our secretary, Commissioner Bonzani. If you'd start reading the rec, uh, letters and you can pass it off to Commissioner Dexter, whatever. Okay, if you'd like a minute please. Good evening. Is anybody there? Okay. Okay, um. At this time, uh, Commissioner Foley is no longer with us. Uh, so I am going to see. Commissioner LeBlanc for Commissioner Foley. Okay, um. I'm not hearing anybody, so. Uh, I guess we'll move along. Commissioner Bonzani and we'll have that person join between letters or whatever. Can't wait to get back in person meetings.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Okay, um, there's probably sixty letters, so we'll get going. Okay, two letter for April twenty-seventh, P and Z Public Hearing, Geishas Project, to Planning and Zoning Commission. I am writing to express my opposition to the zoning change that will permit the apartment. And retail development of of Geishas Strip Mall. As originally described, the project sounded like it would result in a substantial improvement to the Sullivan Ave property. However, as it is unfolding, I believe that too much is being crammed into a small space. Resulting in overly high buildings being planned too close to our Strawberry Fields condominiums. If the development proceeds as now planned, it would adversely impact Strawberry Fields quality of life. Because an overly tall three and one-half story building will be erected so close to our condominiums. That should be visible across much of the property. I also worry about attended noise and traffic. I am hoping that P and Z will insist that development be scaled back or reconfigured in such a way. That will have a less adverse impact upon my home and my neighbors' homes. Thank you, Mark Abrahamson.
Dear Commission members. We are writing to express our thoughts concerning the Sullivan Ave Plaza project proposal. Which is currently under study by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We took a drive down Sullivan Ave proceeding southbound from Main Street to the terminus of Sullivan Ave when it enters Manchester. The Sullivan Ave Plaza is by far the largest I saw along the entire route of Sullivan Ave in South Windsor. We're highly, highly in favor of a refurbishment of the plaza to bring it up to the standards of other properties in town. During this drive, we noted several other high-capacity residential properties. Specifically, the Residence, Harbor Chase, Evergreen Crossing, Tempo Apartments. While all these structures are two and three-story buildings, none of them are located near any other residential communities. We would like to see a similar standard applied to the Sullivan Avenue Plaza project. We recognize that because there's a much smaller buffer between our property and theirs than the above-listed properties. We would like to see some adjustments in their current proposal. Such as relocating the three-story buildings further from Strawberry Fields and some noise abatement techniques put in force. To reduce the noise issues coming from the pool area. We are generally in favor of the success of this project and feel that it should have been refurbished fifty, fifteen to twenty years ago. However, if we cannot see some concessions to address our concerns, we could not support it at this time. We also have some concerns about increased levels of traffic coming down Sullivan as these new residents try to make their way toward Interstate eighty-four. It's difficult at times to make a left turn out of Strawberry Fields to proceed north. Or make a left-hand turn into Strawberry Fields against opposing traffic. I can only imagine how much more difficult, difficult it will be. With several new residents and the increased shopping activity at the upgraded plaza. We thank you for your consideration. Regards, John and Diane Hawkins, seven oh three Zen Way.
Uh, PZZ Chairman, Mr. Bart Paseconis, Thomas, South Windsor. Dear Mr. Chairman, I would like to voice my support for the Geishas Plaza renovation and the proposed apartment. I have been a Southwest resident for fifty years, Southwest has been a loser for over thirty. My father Ernest Heinz owns South Windsor Pharmacy, which is located in the same plaza. I grew up as a kid working there and that used to be a buzzing plaza, which housed the town library as well as many, many other diverse built businesses. In its current state, it's an embarrassment to the town of South Windsor. I still shop at Geishers and it's depressing every time I pull in there to see the conditions of what was once the center of town activities. My thoughts may be a bit skewed because I grew up working here and know what this plaza was once like. However, new people to town and people passing through have to look at the state of the entire area and say to themselves. How can a place like this be in such disrepair when the town of South Windsor is ranked in the top fifty of Money Magazine Places to Live? The town needs this project renovation and the PZZ needs to figure out a way to make it work where the apartment. The town needs this project renovation and the P Z Z needs to figure out a way to make it work with the apartments so the project can move forward. It is in the best interest of the people living in this town, both long-timers and new families moving in. Please do not hesitate to call if you would like to discuss this further. Sincerely, Stephen Heinz.
To whom it may concern, my husband Matthew and I are homeowners at twelve oh-two Zen Way within the Strawberry Fields Development. We purchased our property in two thousand nineteen with part of that purchase decision being the evaluation of the overall pristine maintenance of the Strawberry Fields Development as well as the close-knit quiet neighborhood. While we are very much in favor of the refurbishment of the plaza with a focus on retaining the Geysers supermarket in conjunction with some type of residential development, we do have key concerns with the current proposal as follows. The height and proximity of the building closest to the Strawberry Fields property line, the possibility of additional foot traffic through Strawberry Fields to access the Donnelly Nature Preserve, potentially significant increase in vehicle traffic and the impact to resale value if key concerns are not addressed. In order for us to provide support for the proposed development, we would ask that the above-listed concerns be clearly addressed as part of an updated proposal with a focus on the following changes. Number one, increase the distance between the proposed apartment buildings and the Strawberry Fields property line. Two, decrease the height of the closest building proposed to two stories. Number three, install an appropriate and visually attractive barrier of appropriate length to pre, to prevent foot traffic from the Sullivan Ave property through Strawberry Fields. And number four, ensure adequate traffic management is implemented to reduce impact to Strawberry Fields resident access to and from Sullivan Ave. Thank you for consideration, Matthew and Maureen Miller, twelve oh-two Zen Way.
Okay, letter to zoning board. As a resident and voter of South Windsor, I am very concerned about the development of Geysers Plaza. The property was in need of improvement, but the current plans are too big for the size of the property. So many things will be impacted, especially noise and traffic. A scaled-down version would be much more acceptable. Ruth Preston, one zero zero three Zen Way, Strawberry Fields.
Dear Commission members and Michelle Light, I appreciate your consideration of my comments as part of the April twenty-seventh hearing on the subject application. The pages in the attached file illustrate my concerns relative to my Strawberry Fields community. In summary, that the various revisions of the SAP plan Sullivan Ave proposal have moved the apartment buildings ever closer to our community, now only a hundred and twenty feet away. That the building height allowed in the SAMUD was an issue debated by P and Z and that buildings next to single-family zoning were protected by establishing building height limits of two and a half stories. That the homeowners in our community will be negatively impacted by the proximity and height of the proposed three and a half story buildings. That we feel we should be afforded the same protection as owners of single-family homes. That we feel that the existing trees in the buffer zone, even when suppl, supplemented with evergreen plantings, will be totally inadequate to conceal the building from our view. Thank you for your consideration, James Greason, eleven oh-two Zen Way.
All right, uh, Wayne Sumpel, dear Commission members, this communication supplements oh, two other letters we have sent to the Commission, so, uh, uh, concerns that the two apartment buildings on the southern border of the property are too high and too close to homes within the well-established Strawberry Fields neighborhood. Two, two, two new perspectives are offered below. Um, one, evolution of project in two thousand nineteen, we began to wear the proposal to develop this project. Um, quickly, it says apartments were gonna be between two hundred twenty and two hundred seventy-five feet away from the closest homes in Strawberry Fields and were a maximum height of thirty-five feet. Based upon this presentation, we saw no threat to our little neighborhood. Fast forward to the zoning commission, uh, the next one, voting five-two on the SAMUD tax amendment that would allow the property owner proposal to move forward and therefore the outbreak of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Over the last year, the SAP property owner acquired a small pie-shaped piece of land immediately adjacent to the Strawberry Fields neighborhood. And the original conceptual drawings for a hundred and twelve apartments with a maximum height of thirty-five feet morphed into the current proposal to build a hundred and twenty-five u, units that will be in excess of forty-five feet tall. Two of the four apartment buildings will be very close and very visible to homes in Strawberry Fields, which is a neighborhood of predominantly one-story attached homes. Two, putting the apartment buildings into perspective. One of the proposed three-story apartment buildings on the southern part of the SAP property will be a hundred and twenty feet from the back wall of homes in Strawberry Fields. The building proposal for the southwestern corner will be a hundred and ninety feet away, but the top, topography of the land of the southwestern border drops off and will make the second building seem just as close. To put the distance into perspective, consider that a hundred and twenty feet is less than the distance from home plate to second base on a major league baseball field. To bring the comparison home to South Windsor, please consider dimensions of the vacant bank building at sixteen forty-five Luntown Road that was proposed for us as a new town hall. They just listed here, Ellington Road, hundred, some, uh, thing. Does this picture is worth a thousand words we have attached? Okay, there's some bunch of photos here. I'm not gonna go over those. Um, does the commission really think that the placement of these two enormous apartment buildings won't have a negative impact on the neighborhood and quality of life that homeowners haven't enjoyed since Strawberry Fields was built almost twenty years ago? In closing, we want to reiterate that we are not opposed to development of the SAP. It will be an improvement enjoyed by the whole South Windsor community and will address the need for rental apartments in our town. We do, however, oppose the construction of buildings that will loom over our neighborhood regardless of whatever bushes, trees are planted on the buffer. We strongly encourage the commission, commissioners to do the right thing and not approve the zoning change until and unless the petitioner amends the plan to address the fundamental problems that two of the apartment buildings are too big and too close to homes in the existing Strawberry Fields neighborhood. Thank you for your time and attentions. Respectfully submitted, Colleen and Wayne Sumpel, one zero zero four Zen Way, South Windsor.
Hello, Mr. Pasakonis, I'm unable to attend the Planning and Zoning Commission virtual hearing, but would like to es, express that I would be in favor for this wonderful upgrade to the South Windsor Geysers and the new Sullivan Ave Plaza and apartments. Kind regards, Shawna Robuck. Now we're going on to the next packet Frank, right?
Okay. Dear Mr., uh, which one? Oh, you just read this one? I live in Broadbrook, Connecticut. Oh, next town for the South Windsor and do a lot of shopping at the Sullivan Ave Broadway. I don't know if my support means anything but not being a taxpayer in South Windsor, but I completely support this proposal. Geysers Plaza has been an eyesore and does not have a nice hometown feeling. I have always wondered why it didn't get the attention the rest of South Windsor gets and so happy to see the proposed plans. How can the plans not enhance a beautiful South Windsor? The apartment looks like new ones about to open next to Sophia's Plaza in East Windsor. They look very nice and again, it is about time. I'll be watching the progress in South Windsor for this great proposal. Nora Santos, forty-five Highland Avenue, Broadbrook, Connecticut.
All right Frank, you're gonna read for economic development, that packet?
Steph, read the next one.
Okay, dear Commissioners, please be advised that the Town of South Windsor Economic Development Commission at its regular meeting on March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one unanimously approved sending a letter to the Planning and Zoning Commission to support REESG NewCo South Windsor LLC request for a zone change from general commercial zone to the Sullivan Ave mixed-use development overlay zone. Sincerely, Paul Burnham, Chairman. You're on mute Frank.
To South Windsor P and Z Commission, Michelle Light. I have filed proposals and found discussion of this proposal and today picked up a one-sheet description at Geysers Market. After reading the flyer and considering these articles, I have read regarding this proposal, I wish to share my positive thoughts about this development. I've lived in South Windsor for over forty years and have served in elected positions during my time in town. I consider such a mixed-use development to be a very desirable development to our town. I appreciate the P and Z's concerns regarding the ratios of one to two bedroomed apartments and trust the commission will work for the best outcome of those concerns. However, taking a broader-based assessment of the impact of this proposal on our community, I believe it offers a badly needed effort to upgrade the area town. I further feel such a mixed-use plan for that type of area is highly desirable from both an environmental as well as tax-based perspective. I ask the P and Z as well as other town officials to work positively with these developers and with Geysers to move this project forward in as timely a manner as feasible. Lawrence Brown, seventy-one, Robert Drive, South Windsor.
Dear Ms. Light and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I am writing in favor of proceeding with plans to redevelop the Sullivan Ave Plaza and support Geysers bid to remain here in town. This plan is long overdue and the residents in the west end of town who have endured the deepening blight and slow death of this plaza for more than thirty years will surely welcome the proposed changes. Geysers has been a true and patient friend to the town. They've stayed with us over the years supplying quality grocery products, supporting countless community activities, food drives, car washes, other local events. The store has given residents here in the west end of town a play, a place to shop for excellent produce, meats, delicatessen necessities and fresh baked goodies. It's been a place to meet local politicians, post announcements, show our support for students and residents and purchase Girl Scout cookies. And perhaps most importantly, the store has made it easy for customers to help our local food bank by pre-bagging and pricing food donations. Thank you, Geysers. It's time to support revitalization of this plaza. Sincerely, Kathy Kerrigan, eighteen thirty-eight Main Street.
Hi, dear Commission members, my comments for consideration as part of the April thirteenth hearing follows. I have been a resident of Strawberry Fields for sixteen years. I do agree with the plaza needs refurbishing. However, I am concerned about the number, height and close proximity of our neighborhood of one hundred twenty-five apartments. It appears as though they are being crammed into a very tight area. We have been told that some trees will be saved. However, the condition of these trees make me wonder if any will be worth saving. Many are dead and others are vine-covered. In addition, I am concerned about the additional traffic in the plaza and on Sullivan Avenue that will be created by a hundred and twenty-five apartments. It is my understanding that there will be a hundred eighty-eight parking spaces for the apartment dwellers. I ask you to consider the additional traffic in that area that will be caused by the apartment dwellers' cars. Finally, I am concerned about the property line between the plaza and Strawberry Fields. I request you consider as part of any approval that the plaza owner at his expense install and maintain a barrier between the properties. This will prevent people from coming into our property and disrupting the privacy that we have had and should be able to continue to have. I am viewed to come into our neighborhood and walk side by side with the boundary line between the properties to look at the condition of the trees to be saved in the view we would have of the proposed, proposed three-story apartment building. Finally, I ask that you consider my comments before rendering decisions on the application. I appreciate your time. Send a call, nine oh-three Zen Way.
Dear Commission members, suggest modifying paragraph twelve of this application to specify ten-foot sidewalks or bituminous multimodal side paths to provide safe pedestrian, bike and handicap vehicle access into and beyond this development. This will provide another segment to meet the long-term goal of a ten-foot multi-use path starting at Route Five and ending at South Windsor Town Center. This will provide a safe passage for all users along this busy corridor. Extending the multi-use sidewalk trail path along the total length of this development will cost more than normal but would still be a very small percent of the cost of the project. It would provide great present and future access for residents of this project as well as town residents to other businesses, the high school, recreation center and eventually town center. It will be much better, easier, less costly to include this connection now when it can be integrated with the landscaping of the project. Sincerely, Robert Dickinson, four hundred Seaberry Drive, Bloomfield, Connecticut.
Uh, to Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Terry Butler. I live in Strawberry Fields condo complex. My question is, would you consider putting in sidewalks from the Geysers Plaza along Sullivan Avenue to the Donnelly Nature Preserve? Parking is limited there and I fear the residents may try and walk over either on a busy Sullivan Avenue, cut through Strawberry Fields or walk through the woods behind Strawberry Fields to get there. Thank you for your time, Terry Butler.
This next email is from John Conia. I am opposed to the constructing of any apartments at the Sullivan Ave Plaza, though the idea would help support the Geysers Market, possibly surrounding businesses, at least temporarily. The increase in vehicle traffic pollution possible effect on wetlands that are nearby outweigh any business support. Travel on Sullivan Ave is currently challenging to begin with. This project will not improve the situation. Additionally, the creation of a convenience store where the gas station is will not help local businesses but compete with the country store and Geysers. This entire idea is po, poorly thought out in an effort to support, support one current business, John Conia.
As, uh, to Planning and Zoning Commission, as resident of South Windsor, we are very happy that Geysers Plaza will no longer be an eyesore to our community. However, as residents of Strawberry Fields, we are concerned with the fact that the three-story apartments are being built only one hundred and ten feet from our homes. Living on the northeastern end of the property line, we believe that some sort of permanent barrier, including trees necessary as a buffer, should be provided by the builder. Existing trees here are very sparse and will not provide the barrier you envisioned. It is our hope that the commission will consider providing a permanent barrier with additional trees to provide the privacy and security that is necessary for good neighbor relationships. Thank you for your consideration, Richard and Gail Zabala, one zero zero one Zen Way, South Windsor.
Hello, Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Alan Covignaro and I'm a lifetime resident of South Windsor. I'm writing tonight to strongly advocate for the positive recommendation of the zone change request of REESG NewCo South Windsor LLC. Time and time again, we have been presented with an opportunity to renovate the Geysers area with the area being redone and rezoning a portion of the land for residential. The area has fallen into disrepair and dilapidation. It's time to finally move forward and follow through with rezoning this area to benefit the community. Some of the details include a hundred and twenty-five apartment units being installed with a portion of those being studio apartments. Additionally, with nineteen-plus acres and the general plan of development for the renovation of sixty thousand seven hundred and forty square feet of commercial space. There are many advantages for going ahead with changing the zone. For starters, imagine the additional construction jobs this would bring to South Windsor. Imagine the families and young adults wanting to start and or continue their lives in this great town. And imagine the businesses this project could attract. This project, should I mention, falls between the five and twenty-acre regulation and has at least a hundred-foot frontage towards Sullivan Ave. If we talk about traffic, it's important to remember that the current traffic report from this application notes this is generally sufficient to accommodate traffic generated by the proposed development. Furthermore, looking at the impact this shall have on our school system, the apartments being built would be less family-friendly towards families, again stating that they will remain be anywhere from one-bedroom to studio apartments like mentioned in the last Economic and Development Committee. That being said, these apartments will have little effect on our current school system and we shouldn't restrict people from moving into South Windsor in the first place. The most important part of this project for me is that ten percent of these apartments will be designated as affordable units due to regulations. In today's world of adapting to COVID, affordable homes are becoming more of a necessity than ever. It's important to guarantee this project follows through with this. Moving off of that, this project also adapts towards pedestrians with sidewalks around the complex. Has enough recreation within four hundred feet a unit due to the regulation being in place. To achieve that, a pool and a clubhouse would be built. Finally, if some of you are still unsure about this application, let's go over a review. This project will add a hundred and twenty-five apartments with a majority of these targeted towards studios, one-bedroomed apartments with ten percent of these hundred and twenty-five apartments being regulated towards affordable units as per the regulations, which increases the chances of people like me continuing to live in South Windsor. We would also be supporting Geysers, a local grocer that has stuck with South Windsor for generations to come. There will be minimal impact on traffic with construction and this project follows the regulations with the amount of acres being considered. and this project follows the regulations with the amount of acres being considered. The Architectural and Design Review Board and Economic and Development Commission received this application very well, and now it is the turn of P and Z to decide the same. We have all waited far too long for renovations to occur at this plaza. Continued neglect of this plaza may see further negative side effects. And to consider the fact that the positives outweigh the negatives, it is why I email in and ask for the support for this application. Alan Covignaro.
Ms. Michelle Leif, Director of Planning, P and Z Commission Members. Dear Director and Commission Members, I have lived in South Windsor since nineteen seventy-seven. Since I live on Griffin Road, all my shopping for groceries has been at the local grocery store at Geislers. Throughout the years, I have been pleased with their friendly and courteous service as well as the selection of foods. I cannot help but notice there's more supermarkets open in town that few and few of people are coming to Geislers. I and all the residents of this town do not want to see an empty shelf where Sullivan Ave Plaza once stood. We have an opportunity now to reverse this trend, but it requires the cooperation and support of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I ask the P and Z Commission to approve the zone change and general plan application. Your support of mixed-use development will mean new growth in this section of town that needs it most. I would also bring attention to an opportunity. If you approve this zone change, there will be much time spent planning the layout of the planned retail center and apartment complex. This is a time to plan for bicycle and pedestrian traffic. We all know that if we expand the shopping and housing, and we have a need for sidewalks and connectors, we will hear that we should have made those plans before construction began. Well, this is that time. We have a great ten-foot multi-use path on Sullivan Avenue now in front of the Connecticut Valley Brewing Company, Mobus, and Vistar. Let's continue a similar path in front of Sullivan Avenue Plaza. Looking to the future, if we construct or expand a bike pedestrian path on Sullivan Avenue, whenever we have the opportunity, then eventually we'll have a bike pedestrian path that connects the main parts of our town. This path will allow pedestrians and cyclists to get to the schools and businesses safely. We have an opportunity now similar to that opportunity when Town Center was first proposed. Hopefully, we will make the right decision this time, too. Thank you. Respectfully, Kenneth Sek.
We are writing regarding the plans for the redevelopment of the Geislers' supermarket on Sullivan Ave. We both support the application for the zone change and for the proposed mixed-use development general plan. Rhonda and Robert Bagshaw, Eight Saddleback Drive.
To Michelle Leif, Director of Planning, South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Here, Ms. Leif, this is to provide our support for the new Sullivan Ave Plaza with a new Geislers and luxury housing. My husband and I have lived in South Windsor since two thousand and four. All these years, the Geisler Plaza has been an eyesore. The proposed enhancements to the plaza, Geislers, and additional apartments with amenities would be a welcome change and much-needed upgrade. We shop at Geislers Weekly and do not want to see a local supermarket leave our town as well as not become the flagship store. It would be a shame not to upgrade the Sullivan Avenue Plaza, which would allow it to continue to deteriorate. Please approve this project for the betterment of South Windsor. Thank you for your consideration of our thoughts. Sincerely, Jill and Scott Harrison.
Attention, Ms. Michelle Leif. A hundred percent support the Geislers' plan to expand and improve the Sullivan Avenue Plaza. It has needed repairs and reconstruction for many years. Please accept this as support of the entire project, which will eliminate the current eyesore and provide a new and improvement of the land on Sullivan Ave. Thank you. L. Mercer, Eighty-eight Brook Street.
I like this one. From J. N. Nardini, Planning and Zoning Comments. My wife and I would like to give our full support behind this project to better our community and this eyesore of our shopping plaza. Thanks. The Nardinis, Seven-Sixty-one Griffin Road. That's a good one.
I take it it's a good one because of brevity.
The next one is from Sam and Donna Perino. We are in support of this new development. The proposed retail center, Geislers' expansion, and the building of the apartments will provide the needed upgrades to this area. The Perinos live at One-Ninety-six Frazier Fur Road.
I support my hometown Geisler store. The plaza is an eyesore and should be updated. I do not agree with two-bedroom apartments. More pressure on our schools, which are already at capacity. Studio apartments and one-bedroom, okay for seniors, not for people with kids. I think I speak for a lot of people. Brenda Rogers.
This is from Karen and Bob Morano at Forty-five Rockledge Drive. We strongly support application Twenty-One-Dash-Eleven-P. Request for a zone change from general commercial to Sullivan Ave mixed-use development overlay zone and the general plan of development for the renovation of commercial space and the development of one hundred and twenty-five apartment units on the property known as Sullivan Ave Plaza in South Windsor. This property is the heart and soul of the future of South Windsor. This mixed-use development as proposed is a key ingredient that is much needed in town. We need this for Geislers, our local hometown store, who is making a substantial investment in this project and in this town, and we need this for the people of South Windsor. Please approve this proposal. Kathy and Bob Morano.
Dear Michelle Leif, I am writing to you to express my strong support of the new Sullivan Ave Plaza. My parents are senior citizens who have lived in town for over twenty years and are ready to challenge that. This would be so ideal, especially living next door to their favorite local grocery store. I hope the Planning and Zoning approves this venture. Sincerely, the Medina Family and the Pezzic Family.
From Cindy Acanto at Twenty Robert Tribe, I'm writing to voice my support for the Geislers' Plaza Project. Geislers is a huge benefit to our community, has long suffered in a rundown plaza. This project will support them and allow additional businesses and residents to enjoy South Windsor.
Attention, Ms. Michelle Leif. I one hundred percent support the Geisler's plan to expand and approve the Sullivan Avenue Plaza. It has needed repairs and reconstruction for many years. Please accept this as support of the entire project, which will eliminate the current eyesore and provide a new and improvement of the land on Sullivan Avenue. Thank you. L. Mercer, Eighty-eight Brook Street.
To the town of South Windsor, I'm writing to voice my support for the application for luxury apartments and retail renovations to the Geislers' Plaza on Sullivan Ave. The renovations to the plaza will attract new retail tenants, which will help to support Geislers, an important family-owned member of the South Windsor business community. The apartments will attract young professional people and provide an opportunity for us to keep the next generation living here in town, which is an important part of keeping our community thriving. The apartments will also provide empty nesters with the opportunity to keep their roots in town, which also adds to community life. The developer's willingness to make such a large investment here in South Windsor should be welcomed for the expansion of the tax base and as an inducement for other property owners in town to consider renovation and expansion of their properties, helping to keep South Windsor on a continued path of growth and prosperity. Sincerely, Helmar Wolf.
Ms. Michelle Leif, Director of Planning. Here, Ms. Leif, we are writing regarding the plans for the redevelopment of the Geisler Supermarket Sullivan Avenue Plaza. We both support the application for the zone change and for the proposed mixed-use developments general plan. Rhonda and Robert Bagshaw, Eight Saddleback Drive, South Windsor.
Dear commission members, this is in regard to the proposed Sullivan Ave Plaza project currently before the Planning and Zoning Commission. We are happy to see that something might be done to clean up this blight, and we could be for it, but there is one aspect of the current plan that, if not corrected, will turn us completely against it. One specific problem is with proximity and height of the apartment buildings nearest to the Strawberry Fields neighborhood, property lines, and homes. We attended Peter DeMalle's session with Strawberry Fields residents and the P and Z meeting on the thirteenth of April. We appreciate the information, but we need to address the fact that these apartment buildings are too big and too close. They will loom over our homes in plain sight. Illustrations of the proposed buildings do not account for the ineffectiveness of the dead and dying vine-infested trees that separate our properties. They do not account for sightlines from the street or from all of our homes. It's easy for us to see where the apartment buildings will be, and they will be in plain view. They are too close, and they are too tall. As an over-fifty-five community, we have all worked long and hard for what we have. These are our homes, and saying that different rules may apply because we are not single-family homes is to misunderstand the nature and quality of our community and the pride that our homeowners take in our corner of South Windsor. We personally hope the Sullivan Ave Plaza project does happen, but our answer is no. If the developer cannot or will not fix this problem, we hope you understand. We listened to the presentation on how apartment buildings increase property values. We're not questioning the research, but it does not address how the property value of a specific one- or two-story home is affected when a three-and-a-half-story apartment building is built only a hundred and twenty feet away. Forty yards is a routine field goal or pass these days. While that is our main concern, we should briefly like to mention one more. It is difficult now to make a left turn out of Strawberry Fields. It's dangerous now to make a left turn into Strawberry Fields. If we can make a left turn out, our homeowners can shop at the new Geislers. A turning lane to make a left turn into Strawberry Fields might be a solution for cars passing us at speed inside the fog line. Thanks for listening, and thanks in advance for your help. Michael and Angela McMath, Eight-O-One Zen Way.
This is a second letter, or third, from Jim Greason. I'll read it quick. Dear commission members, I appreciate your consideration for my comments as part of April thirteenth meeting on the public application. He talks about the zone change and several figures. According to commission minutes, a building size issue was raised by several members. And, Michelle Leif, in the approved SAMUD, residential buildings adjacent to a single-family zone shall not exceed two-and-a-half stories. Apparently, the height concern was put to rest by restricting the height in your single-family homes to that allowed in an MM zone. While Strawberry Fields is not zoned as single-family, I hope that you agree that we are a quality residential development that is not your typical apartment-type project, and this hopefully will be considered in your deliberations regarding the requested zone change and the subsequent project discussions and decisions. In summary, I do have expressed concerns, but I also fully am in support of the project as a way to revalidize this distressed area of our community. Thank you for your consideration. James Greason, One Zero Zero Two Zen Way.
Andrea and David Thoman, One Zero Zero Two Zen Way, we're writing this letter in order to make you aware of our concerns. We feel strongly that our single-family unit in Strawberry Fields would be seriously impacted by the apartments. A three-story building in such close proximity would create a number of problems. The rear building of these units would tower over our home, being forty-five feet high, possibly as close as a hundred and twenty-five feet to the nearest building. Additionally, this development could create health issues related to the garbage that would be created by the high population density of these rental units. It is our understanding that the traffic study prepared for this proposal development did not take into consideration the intersection of Strawberry Lane and Sullivan Ave. We are certain that such a large increase in population within a mile of our only exit will create problems. We would ask you to reflect upon the issues we have raised here before you approve this proposed development. We have no doubt that these apartments, as currently proposed, would have a serious impact upon the value of our property. Finally, please note that we are not opposed to improvement of the plaza. It has been allowed to deteriorate to a point that it is an eyesore in our neighborhood, but we wholeheartedly request that P and Z ensure that, however it is developed, it does not negatively impact the value of surrounding properties. Andrea and Dave Thoman.
Dear commission members, this is in regard to the proposed Sullivan Ave Plaza project currently before the Planning and Zoning Commission. We are happy to see that something might be done to clean up this blight, and we could be for it, but there is one aspect of the current plan that, if not corrected, will turn us completely against it. Our specific problem is with the proximity and height of the apartment buildings nearest to the Strawberry Fields neighborhood, property lines, and homes. We attended Peter DeMalle's session with Strawberry Fields residents and the P and Z meeting on April thirteenth. We appreciate the information, but we need to address the fact that these apartment buildings are too big and too close. They will loom over our homes in plain sight. Illustrations of the proposed buildings do not account for the ineffectiveness of the dead and dying vine-infested trees that separate our properties. They do not account for sightlines from the street or from our homes. It is easy for us to see where the apartment buildings will be, and they will be in plain view. They are too close, and they are too tall. As an over-fifty-five community, we have worked long and hard for what we have. These are our homes, and saying that different rules may apply because we are not single-family homes is to misunderstand the nature and quality of our community and the pride that our homeowners take in our corner of South Windsor. We personally hope the Sullivan Ave project does happen, but our answer is no. If the developer cannot or will not fix this problem, we hope you understand. We listened to the presentation on how apartment buildings increase property values. We are not requesting the research, but it does not address how the property value of a specific one- or two-story home is affected when a three-and-a-half-story apartment building is built only a hundred and twenty feet away. Forty yards is a routine field goal or pass these days. While that is our main concern, we would briefly like to mention one more. It is difficult now to make a left turn out of Strawberry Fields. It is dangerous now to make a left turn into Strawberry Fields. If we can make a left turn out, our homeowners can shop at the new Geislers. A turning lane to make a left turn into Strawberry Fields might be a solution for cars passing us at a speed inside the fog line. Thanks for listening, and thanks in advance for your help. Michael and Angela McMath, Eight-O-One Zen Way, South Windsor.
This next letter is from Caroline and Charles Manzella, Three-O-Three Strawberry Lane. We've been owners at Strawberry Fields since two thousand and fourteen. We moved to Strawberry Fields from New Jersey because our community is so aesthetically pleasing in the wonderful town of South Windsor. From the time we moved here, we couldn't understand how Geislers' plaza was allowed by the town to become the rundown mess we see today. We are certainly in favor of rehabbing the plaza, but also have some reservations about the current proposal. As resident owners at Strawberry Fields, we're concerned about the proposed development of retail and residential units. Specifically, the proposed apartment complex will be the highest in South Windsor. This complex, as proposed, is too close to the Strawberry Fields property line. Even with the addition of trees to replace those to be removed, the developer-owner has five years to allow the trees to fill in. In the meantime, there will be a direct sightline to our neighbors' homes and attendant noise associated with the apartments, pool, parking, commercial traffic to the plaza. We therefore request that the owner and developer consider reducing the height of the apartments to two stories and/or moving the complex further away from the property line. As a community, we contribute at least three hundred thousand dollars in property taxes to the town of South Windsor, and we believe Strawberry Fields deserves this consideration. Sincerely, Caroline and Charles Manzella, Three-O-Three Strawberry Lane.
From Agnes Mondo. Good morning. My wife and I live in a residential upscale community of Strawberry Fields. We support the Sullivan Ave project to some extent. We are in complete agreement with what has been written previously by members of our community. We agree that as important as Sullivan Ave project is renovated, this will correct the terrible eyesore in the community and create the conditions for Geisler's market to modernize for the future. While we support the concept of improving the plaza and having a residential portion of the project adjacent to Strawberry Fields and upscale residential neighborhood, we have significant concerns about the close proximity and height of the proposed apartment buildings closest to our neighborhood. To mitigate the potential impact to our neighborhood and the strong possibility that our property values would decline as a result of the development of the SAP as proposed, we would recommend that the Planning and Zoning approve this plan and be contingent upon the following changes. Increase the distance between the proposed apartment buildings and the property line. Decrease the height of the closest buildings proposed to two stories. Install an appropriate and visually attractive barrier or appropriate length to prevent foot traffic from the SAP property and provide direct access with signage from the SAP to Major Donnelly Preserve. In conclusion, we are in favor of the zone change from commercial to combined commercial residential. However, we are opposed to the height and proximity of apartment buildings and the absence of direct access to Major Donnelly Preserve. While the increased tax base created by the development of SAP is attractive, it would be in unintended consequences of having reduced home values and property taxes within Strawberry Fields as a result of the SAP development. That was from Agnes Mondo.
This is from Terry Butler, Eight-O-Three Zen Way. I have not been a fan of the project from the beginning, but had resigned to the fact that it was going to happen. Having a millennial son myself, I know that they want clubs, nice restaurants to walk to. They're not looking to live near a grocery store. So the tenants of the two bedrooms will probably have children. My main concern, though, is where all the kids go to play. Skateboarding, running around in the park. My main concern though is where the, all the kids going to play, skateboarding, running around in the parking lot, busy Sullivan Ave? Now we have been presented with a new plan, three story buildings that Strawberry Fields residents will have to look at from their homes. It's an eyesore tenement comes to mind. Please consider less apartments and changing the height back to two stories. Maybe Geisler's would consider moving to Evergreen Walk. You could then use the entire parking lot as an upscale apartment complex. And the building could be two stories and spread out with a pool in the middle all along with a play area. Thank you for your time. Terry Butler, eight oh three Zen Way.
From Elaine Anderson. Dear Commission Members, the renovation of the Sullivan Avenue Plaza is needed, but the residential component of the plan presents several concerns. The height of the buildings will make them easily visible from Strawberry Fields. The distance between our closest houses and the apartments being only a hundred and ten feet will make them feel as though they loom over our property. And there is no way to screen that from our view. The closest of the apartment parking lots and the pool may be concerned about noise. I am also concerned about the placement of the dumpsters. The management and upkeep of this renovated property is also concerning. With the same ownership that has left the property deteriorate to its current state, I question whether to renovate a property will be well maintained. The impact of the traffic on Sullivan Avenue. At certain times, it is difficult now to enter and exit Strawberry Fields. I feel that the renovation of the blighted plaza is necessary. But the placement and height of the residential component of the project needs some modifications to make less of an impact on our neighborhood. I hope you will consider these concerns. Sincerely, Elaine Anderson, eight oh four Zen Way.
Dear Commission Members, this is in regard to the proposed Sullivan Ave Plaza project currently before planning and zoning. My mother and I reside in the community of Strawberry Fields, which is adjacent to this project. We are both pleased that the Sullivan Ave Plaza will be revitalized to an updated facility and support the project. We do have major concerns, look forward to modifications to the developers' plans with regard to the following. Proximity and height of the proposed, proposed building closest to the property line. The need for sufficient buffer between the project and Strawberry Fields. Prevention of foot traffic into our private community, since the project does not allow for direct access to Major Donnelly Preserve. Impact of proposed Sullivan Ave Plaza project to property values. Should the plans not be revised and future maintenance of new structure to pre- to prevent property decline. As is currently experienced at the Sullivan Ave Plaza. Thank you for your time and consideration to the points listed above. Paula Consango and Arlene Stiper, two oh two Strawberry Lane.
Okay, from Jay Chase to planning and zoning comments. Dear planning and zoning Commission Members, as a homeowner of Strawberry Fields, I want to express my concerns and make some general recommendations regarding the proposed zone change. And redevelopment plans before you regarding the Sullivan Avenue Plaza. First, the rejuvenation of the plaza itself will be a welcome turn of events, particularly because it's been such an eyesore for so long. If no other reason that we all endured this embarrassment too many years. Now it's imperative we make certain it's redeveloped, then managed and maintained well going forward. In my early career, I had the opportunity to be a chief housing planner for the state of Vermont, due to the work in the state was short-lived. It helped influence, inform and shape the rest of my forty plus year career as a private real estate developer. My point, I understand development process from both sides. The proposed Sullivan Avenue Plaza redevelopment in its current situation prevents scale, density. Devaluation, privacy, noise, traffic, visual encroachment and potential trespassing issues. Each of these issues are, are on their own, have the potential to impact the value of our homes and the overall. The desirability of living at Strawberry Fields. If these issues are not satisfactorily addressed during the planning and approval process and before the redevelopment is constructed. The peaceful enjoyment of our well, very well maintained and desirable community will absolutely be negatively impacted. Impacted diminished assess values and marketability of our homes due to a less than a well conceived redevelopment next door. Will trend translate into unhappy Strawberry Fields homeowners. More difficult sellability of our homes, lower sale prices and lower assessed values will also mean low real estate taxes to the town of South Windsor. Shoe horning a hundred and twenty five apartments into an area more suitable for half that destiny. As well as development has designed as requesting three story buildings forty five feet high. Though the overlay zone permits buildings of three stories not to exceed forty five feet height. Regular multifamily zoning limits buildings to two and a half stories and thirty five feet height. The extra floor and ten more feet in height will have a meaningful and permanent negative visual impact on the quality of our views at Strawberry Fields. And will also look out of scale next to the new Geisler's building. No amount of traditional buffering, buffering or screening will obscure the stark. Back three story forty five foot apartment buildings in that location. Next to a private or single story homes next to door at Strawberry Fields will be way out of character. Out of scale and forever stand out like sore thumbs. I can't stress enough, two story apartment buildings in that location. Particularly given Strawberry Fields lower profile architectural design in close proximity. Would appear more in character and scaled to pre-existing neighborhood. In SAMUD overlay zones, residential buildings adjacent to single family homes or single family development shall not exceed two and a half stories. Those Strawberry Fields are not detached single family homes, they are individually owned attached single family homes. As such, I believe Strawberry Fields meets the tenure and intention set out under the code definition. Therefore, any adjacent development should follow the code and be limited to two and a half stories. Privacy, sound, noise and potential encroachment trespassing can be minimized by requiring development. Install a permanent barrier wall fence at a height equal to the height of the building. And wall and built between Sullivan Ave Plaza and Strawberry Fields. We have all seen the residential noise barrier systems and commercial concrete sound wall system along highways. These could be placed between the two properties landscape with dense conifer trees and ivy. Just planted trees without a continuous physical wall will not provide year round visual, sound and encroachment trespassing protection. Traffic along Sullivan Avenue was already quite problematic and dangerous, especially during peak commuting times. Though more and more throughout the entire day. If, if a traffic study has not been undertaken for this development, it really ought to be, to be understanding how adding all these new residents. Will impact the already overburdened roadway. I would strongly recommend adding turning lanes into development like Strawberry Fields and others. Where at times we have to sit for a minute on end. Minutes on end in the middle of the roadway waiting to turn while cars either back up or whizz by around us. These moments, and there are many, are accidents waiting to happen. Finally, unless access to Major Donnelly Preserve is formally addressed in the Sullivan Avenue Plaza. I, Strawberry Fields could become a pathway for access to the preserve. We do not want to have to be put in a situation where neighbors are forced to patrol their own property for neighboring tenants. Who may be encroaching or trespassing across our prop- private property to reach the preserve. Let's make sure they have access to the preserve from their own property and not ours, not ours. Thank you for taking my comments into consideration during, during your review on this redevelopment application. The Sullivan Ave Plaza redevelopment can be a win, win, win for town of South Windsor, the neighbors and the developer. If the end result reflects all the stakeholders' concerns have been addressed. John Chase, eleven oh one Zen Way.
Stephen and Susan Livingston at five oh one Zen Way. My wife and I live at Strawberry Fields, we're concerned about the scope of the building project at Geisler's Plaza having a negative effect on the value of our homes. Some of these negative effects are as follows, noise from the clubhouse and pool. Odor from dumpsters depending on their location. Residents of the apartments cutting through Strawberry Fields to get to Donnelly Preserve. Wildlife will be diminished, there will be much more traffic on Sullivan Ave going by Strawberry Fields exit. The bottom line here is the apartment buildings are too high and crammed on a property that is too small for the mixed use of this project. Stephen and Susan Livingston.
Uh, two South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. As residents of Strawberry Fields condominiums on Sullivan Avenue, one wants to convey our concerns and objections to certain aspects of the proposed Geisler's Plaza development. Firstly, we want to make it clear that we are in favor of the plaza development. Our concerns and objections are for the most part in regard to the three story apartment buildings, which were the butt of Strawberry Fields property. One, the building is too close to our property line, a distance of only a hundred and twenty feet. Two, the building, especially the third floor, would be visible to us through the sparse foliage and would be aesthetically displeasing. A little history here, the town insisted in two thousand six that our clubhouse be built to resemble the original barn, which had to be torn down. Reason given by the town was for aesthetics and to maintain the appearance of a historic barn in order to preserve the farmland atmosphere in this area. Now right up the road from us is going to be built two and three story apartment buildings crowded into a very small space. And certainly not, in our view, aesthetically appealing to this area of town. At the very least, one story less would prevent, prevent a less congested appearance to the cluster of buildings. Three, the close proximity of the proposed three story buildings, pool and clubhouse for our homes is in. Strawberry Fields would invite noise and light pollution to our quiet Strawberry Fields neighborhood. Four, the concerns listed above will negatively impact the real estate values of our homes. Five, foot traffic to. Uh, Strawberry Fields to the Major Donnelly Preserve, we propose specific access to the preserve at the Geisler's end of the property. Increased traffic on Sullivan Avenue from and to the apartments and retail will make it even more unsafe for Strawberry Field homeowners, guests, delivery truck. Trucks and workers to turn left onto Sullivan Ave from our entrance driveway. That's a new development apartments will still owned by the current owner will not be maintained in the future and will become rundown and even more of an eyesore than it is now. We hope the town will address this issue with a proper order. Thank you for your consideration of our concerns. Sincerely, Margaret and Bill Doperak, one oh two Strawberry Lane.
Dear Commission Members, I have lived in Strawberry Fields for fourteen years. It's a beautiful premier neighborhood, very desirable community. Uh, for those fifty five and over. Uh, what a wonderful, close knit community of residents, taxpayers and voters. Who care deeply for each other and for South Windsor. Uh, these folks are also concerned about uh, cutting through their private streets to Major Donnelly. They're concerned about traffic and getting in and out of their um, development there at Strawberry Fields. And they're asking the commissioners to reconsider the proposed zone change. Which would allow three story multifamily structure to be built in the eastern corner. Of the SAP property so close to the single family homes in Strawberry Fields. This is respectfully submitted by Donna Smith, twelve oh three Zen Way.
To the South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission, thank you for considering my comments on the proposed, proposed zone change and upgrades to the Geisler's Plaza on Sullivan Ave. First, let me say that the plaza sadly in need of improvement in the black eye in the town, so I support the zoning change. Having residence units, commercial space in one development area has done very successfully in other towns. Like West Hartford as young, today's young professionals as well as older adults downsizing from larger homes. Then enjoy having shopping and eating amenities adjacent to where they live. That said, I request that the commission be carefully consider the actual detail of the proposed development plan. Which includes some items concerned for me as a resident of Strawberry Fields. As you know, a community of beautiful, well-tamed homes, a busted community. And the commission have an interest in making sure that development is keeping with our property and South Windsor as a whole. And a couple of specific areas for your consideration, the one hundred foot buffer between the two parcels of land seems inadequate for two properties. Of such different character and I'm concerned that building so close to Strawberry Fields will, will lower the property values of our community. And again, the proposed height at three and a half is higher than homes in Strawberry Fields and will be added to opposing. And the design shows rental, and initially designed shows rentals at two and a half stories, which is much more keeping with the neighborhood. All outside storage units and refuse dumpsters should be closed that they are not visible from Strawberry Fields homes. Strawberry Fields is a private community and as such prohibits public access to our property, non-h homeowners shall be prevented from trespassing. And the planned development must make provision for tenants to accept, to access the nature preserved from behind development itself to avoid foot traffic through our property. Thank you. Regards Gretchen Marks, eight oh two Zen Way, South Windsor.
This next letter is from Carol Gesmundo. I'm a member of the wonderful Strawberry Fields Luxury Condominiums community. And I have some concerns in regards to noise. Traffic is another concern of mine. The height of the apartment buildings scares me. The closeness of the buildings to our property line. And this project will result in lower resale values. And I'm also concerned about future upkeep of these apartments. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for South Windsor. Carol Gesmundo.
Uh, from Athia Fremer. Dear Council, I have been a resident of Strawberry Fields condominiums since two thousand three and have been a faithful customer of Greg Geisler's grocery store since I have moved to South Windsor. As a resident of this town, I have seen the town grow in a positive way. Although in general, I am in favor of a newly renovated developer Geisler's strip mall since the mall has been a ghost town. With the exception of Geisler's and Hot Leather. However, I believe that taking this project to unfavorably new heights, I am referring to the one hundred and twenty five units. That will abut Strawberry Fields with a height of three stories high. They may want to boast that they will have the highest building in the town, but this seems to go against the effort to keep South Windsor as natural. And appearing fitting in with the land formations, which also abut the Major Donnelly Preserve wherever possible. Rising three stories up and towering over our development is an eyesore. Two stories would be pushing the limit, but three stories is unsightly. Our pri- also our privacy as well as safety are at risk. Path lead, path leading from the plaza to our Strawberry Fields community to the preserve that cut through the property would put us at risk. To quote Robert Frost, fences make good neighbors. Please give this issue considerable consideration. You have already heard about the i- issues from my neighbors. I am in agreement with these issues. I hope you give our concern the attention they deserve. Sincerely, Athia Fremer, resident homeowner, seven oh one Zen Way.
And this is the last letter I have, Frank. Um, this is from Dolores Massari. She lives at nine oh one Zen Way. In principle, I favor the redevelopment of the Sullivan Ave Plaza. It will revitalize the area and bring considerable revenue to our town. However, I respectfully implore the committee to consider and mitigate the negative impact. The proposed plaza will have on the citizens of Strawberry Fields. Strawberry Fields is a very quiet, friendly neighborhood of people ranging in age from fifty five to one hundred years old. We're good citizens, we're active members of the community. South Windsor or some residents have lived in town their entire lives. Ours is a small, middle class neighborhood. We take great pride in the appearance of our homes and beautifully manicured grounds. I invite the members of the commission to visit Strawberry Fields so you can see our community firsthand and why we enjoy living here. In the proposal for the Sullivan Ave Plaza, the two story apartment buildings originally planned have been replaced with street, three story buildings. The total height and proximity of these three story apartment buildings closest, uh, closest to Strawberry Fields is daunting. It will dwarf our development and be visible throughout Strawberry Fields. It will destroy the aesthetics of our community. This apartment building I'm talking about is only a hundred and twenty feet from our nearest home. In the artist's rendering of the Sullivan Ave Plaza, trees in the buffer zone tower above and completely block this apartment building from view. This is a very unrealistic drawing. It will take many, many, many years of growth for any new plantings to obscure this proposed three story building. The proposed construction is expected to take a minimum of two years and undoubtedly will be very noisy. Once the construction is completed, traffic within the plaza, delivery trucks, garbage trucks, snowplows, shoppers, residents, vehicles. Will contribute to noise. The outdoor activities from residents also will add noise. A pool in close proximity to Strawberry Fields is planned. The peace and quiet at Strawberry Fields will end. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, sound becomes unwanted when it either interferes with normal activities such as sleeping, conversation. Or disrupts or diminishes one's quality of life. Most of the residents of Strawberry Fields no longer earn wages. It will be extremely difficult for us to recoup financial loss if we are forced to sell a devalued house. Although an eight foot retaining wall adjacent to Strawberry Fields is planned and will absorb some noise. The wall will not block all the noise and does not extend across the entire border. Thick vegetation currently prohibits access by foot from Sullivan Ave to Strawberry Fields. Once this vegetation is cleared. It may be possible to enter Strawberry Fields from the plaza. I hope that whatever means are needed to prevent access to Strawberry Fields from the plaza will be required. In conclusion, I respectfully request the committee to carefully examine the effects. The proposed plaza will have on the citizens of Strawberry Fields and take whatever steps are needed to preserve our quality of life and the unique character of Strawberry Fields. I thank the committee for your time, consideration. Sincerely, Dolores Massari.
Okay, I have one last letter. I think this will be it. To planning and zoning. Uh, so to women may concern. Please accept this letter regarding the proposed zoning change and the construction project on the s- south side of the Geisler's strip mall. PM and I are relatively new to the Strawberry Fields development, having moved to the area at the end of two thousand nineteen. Some of the features attracted us to the area included the proximity to great South Windsor attractions, restaurants, shopping, things to do, et cetera. But a living space who, in a beautiful rural and quiet setting, which our development has provided. Once we drive into our complex or southern road, we get the sensation of leaving the hustle and bustle of South Windsor. Once we drive into our complex or southern road, we get the sensation of leaving the hustle and bustle of South Windsor for a private, homey and peaceful living space. We enjoy where we live and love sharing with our neighbors. We'll all enjoy the same. We are not opposed to the proposed construction project on the property adjacent to Strawberry Fields. However, we have some major concerns as follows. The plan height, the plan height of the apartment is excessive, three stories and the close proximity close proximity to Strawberry Fields. I wonder if the apartments will have a right, a view right into our residences as some will be located just a hundred and twenty feet from five of our homes. There will be additional traffic on Sullivan Avenue due to the influx of new tenants. There is already a chore for residents of South uh Strawberry Fields to turn left onto Sullivan Avenue and that situation will worsen as a result of this project. We are concerned about apartment tenants walking through the Strawberry Fields development to access the Major Donnelly Preserve. We are unclear what impact the construction project will have on our home's resale value. We hope that our concerns are considered and our adjust- and that adjustments can be made. Respectfully submitted, Pam Barto and Dan Weinick, five oh two Zen Way, South Windsor. I believe that's my last letter also.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask town staff again if there's anyone waiting uh on the phone lines that would like to speak. Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Eric Dilson. I live at eighteen Fox Hill Road. I am also one of the fourth-generation owners of Geisler's supermarket. So I grew up working here. My first job on the clock was at fifteen years old bagging in this location. So I have been around this for many years. I am asking that you help support this with the hundred and twenty-five apartments as is stated so that we can realize our dream and push the store forward to where it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the phone line? Okay, thank you very much. Um at this time, uh I will turn to commissioners and we'll start with Commissioner McGuire.
Hello. So, where do I start? You know, most of the letters from the folks at Strawberry Fields were, seemed to be in favor of the complex uh with some changes and, and, and some of their requests seem pretty reasonable um to me. Um mostly it's about the height of the buildings and the proximity of, of the, the buildings and um I'm wondering if we could talk a little bit about um just how close the complex is going to come to Strawberry Fields and whether it might be too close.
Talk away.
Is that a, you're posing a question to us?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, you hit the wrong button there. Okay, uh good evening. Uh for the record, Peter Demali, president of Design Professionals, representing the applicants. Um I'd like to, uh yes, I would like to address that and thank you for the question. Uh the the, the building in question is the easterly building. Let's just call them uh going left to right, the smallest building, residential building is A and B, C and D. So let's call it building D, closest to the southeast corner of the property. That's the one in question. Uh let me, let me first start by saying at all times throughout this entire process, including when we first went to Strawberry Fields, we've been there three times. I've been there three times, met with them twice, and we did a virtual one on April first. Uh we did one last Friday with representatives, representative delegation at their uh community building, the beautiful Barn Lake Community Building. And I was there uh back in June of twenty nineteen. At all times, we've always represented they're going to be three-story buildings at all times. When we went to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the zoning text amendment last winter a year ago, it was approved in, I believe it was January of twenty twenty. When we went there, we proposed three-story buildings. The regulations said three-story buildings. The only debate with respect to the height was uh for, on the other side of Sullivan Avenue, it was determined that they should be two, maximum two and a half stories in height. Uh they were in close proximity to single-family residences that's detached dwelling. Uh and the, there was a concern about that, so you wanted to drop it down, uh I think it was to two and a half stories. On our side of the street, uh you, you indicated in your regulations uh that they would be three stories, not three and a half stories as the letters are saying, three stories. We've never varied from three-story buildings in any presentation, whether it's informal or otherwise to anyone, including to this commission before the zoning text amendments or during, during the text amendment hearings and any other time. They've always been three stories. We're required to meet the regulations, which are maximum three-story height, which we do. Uh Tim Wentz has done excellent job in it. They're beautiful buildings. And we're required to have a fifty-foot buffer, in this case in, in addition to the twenty-five-foot buffer at Strawberry Fields, twenty-five-foot buffer that's been growing for the last uh fifteen to twenty years. Uh so they have evergreen trees along there. It's been growing. It's a smaller buffer required for multifamily to any other zone, wrapping around a multifamily. All the multifamily zones in town only require a twenty-five-foot buffer. Uh I was involved with the development of Strawberry Fields. It was developed as, under the multifamily zone. Uh and under your definition, three or more units is multifamily. I recognize they consider themselves to be single-family units, but they're attached single-family units and that makes them multifamily. Uh and that's fine, and it's beautiful. I mean, the architecture is beautiful there, just like we're proposing. They have steep roofs that go up higher than you might have in a tract type house. Uh and, and this is more New England character. This is what we want. That's what Jeff Bianco did for Strawberry Fields and that's what Tim Wentz is doing uh for the Sullivan Avenue Plaza. With respect to the distance, so it's the easterly most building. We'll call it building D, uh the one farthest to the right on the plan. Uh and the closest corner to their closest building at Strawberry Fields is a, is a hundred and twenty feet in our general plan at this time. We cannot move it much farther to the north or are we coming against the required front yard setback line along Sullivan Avenue? So we're very limited. There may be a move in a few feet from what we have, but we're very limited. The other corner of the building, let's say that's the southeast corner of the building, the other corner of the building, southwest corner of the building, it's angled, so it's farther away from Strawberry Fields. It's another twenty feet farther, so it's a hundred and forty feet from the closest building. In between is a wooded area. Um it's their buffer with maturing trees. Um let's say they're half, half the height of maturity, somewhere in that range, sort of twenty, twenty-five feet, somewhere in that range. Uh and then, uh and then you have, oh, oh, it's, you have a wooded area deciduous trees primarily. I don't think there are any coniferous trees in there, evergreen trees. Uh and they are varying sizes. Some are healthy and some aren't the greatest. Uh some have a lot of vines on them. You can actually see that bittersweet and other things are choking them. Uh some of the trees are quite nice, I've heard. Our surveyors have been out there. We've even located all those trees, every single one of them, of any size. Uh and some of them are very substantial trees. The question is, how do you buffer? The regulations you have tell us what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to either have incorporate, uh you know, an interplanted buffer, which is trying to retain as much vegetation as we can between uh our property line and the end of our fifty-foot buffer. We're willing to go beyond that. By the way, we have, we're proposing in our design additional trees beyond that in many cases. Uh however, you're supposed to do that, you can have an interplanted buffer where we preserve as much as we can that makes sense. Uh and this is a thing for the site plan stage of an application if we get past this own change in general plan stage. Uh and another option is to remove the existing trees on our property, retaining the existing buffer, twenty-five-foot buffer and, and evergreen trees they have on their property and to redo it uh with a buffer uh that would be, over time would be more effective. Um o- over time, it would be completely effective. You have, for example, alternating rows twen- uh of, of evergreen trees. Um and they would, uh you plant them close enough together, they grow together uh and you'll have a complete screening and they can grow up, you know, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty feet in height. So you can do that. That's readily done. Also, we, in between our property line and our, the end of our fifty-foot buffer, the elevation goes up from their property and then we're proposing goes down on our property so that the first floor elevation are comparable between our building, that's a building D, the easterly building, and their building, the closest building they have at Strawberry Fields, which is this, of the three buildings against our property line, two are at an angle to it and one is directly buttoning at a three, three-unit building. Uh that, the building, uh the, the closest uh it, the, the closest building there, the, the elevation is comparable to the elevation we're proposing. We're proposing to drop the whole site in the residential area. There are multiple reasons why we're doing that. One is to have a buffer, a berm effect in between. So we have a natural berm fairly high in between that obscures the view of our development. That's a plus. Usually you have to build those things. We already have it naturally occurring if we drop the elevation. We're also dropping it because we need to achieve handicapped accessibility to all first floor levels of all buildings. Over half of our units are going to be handicapped accessible, including the second and third units, uh floors in the, in the middle building, the forty-one unit building. Um the commission requested that we have an elevator building, so at least some of the second and third floor units could be accessible and we've done that. The entire forty-one unit building is accessible. So we have a buffer design that is worked out between the director of planning, between our landscape architect and planners, between our engineers, uh between the town engineer, between the Planning and Zoning Commission and between, and, and also with input, and we'd welcome that, and I told them that the other day, we'd welcome their input into the design of that particular buffer. It's a matter of design. Uh and over time, the buffer will, will obscure completely our development. Uh your regulations state at five-year increments and at the maturity. That's what we're supposed to show on our buffer plan. I think if we work together, we can come up with this. We can increase the height of the natural earthen berm is one element we can do. We can have an opaque fence, six feet, eight feet, whatever, somewhere in that fifty feet to also obscure it. Maybe it's on the highest point. Maybe it's right along the property line. They seem to want a fence. We talked about that. If I lived there, I'd want to be able to walk over. They give a, a fence with a gate that only they can access through it. We can have a pathway. We suggested that. Most of them have rejected that. Um even though they can, would control access. No one else could go through there. I think they should do that and have access to this plaza. They, instead they've suggested going all the way around uh along Sullivan Avenue, uh and we can discuss that later, uh which is very problematic. Uh so, so we have a, a unique opportunity to work with landscape architects, land planners, engineers, town staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission and Strawberry Fields to come up with a buffer plan that's best. They can help us decide which trees can remain and they can, and which would be replaced and what type of plantings we have. Do we want a, a single row packed together of evergreens? Do we want two rows packed together of evergreens? Do we want alternating? We can achieve your standard incorporated within your zoning regulations. We have, again, we have double the buffer that they were requiring to have. That means it's twenty-five feet on their side and fifty feet on our side. That's a seventy-five-foot buffer. There aren't too many applications in this town where you have full seventy-five feet of buffer and where you have the south side of it, in this case their side, which is um already maturing, it's been growing for fifteen to twenty years. You already have that benefit. It's a very rare benefit. And there's some big trees in there. We probably will end up with a hybrid, uh an interplanted buffer as you have in your regulations. Uh and then we can also do some things on our side of the buffer. There are areas where we might be able to also plant supplemental trees. Uh we show that in concept on our general plan, but we haven't designed it that because you don't require at that level at this time. You don't require us to show fencing. You don't require us to show berms. You don't require us to show the double rows of trees, whether we're cutting trees. That's for the next step if we get to that point. That's what we have. So the whole issue is proximate, uh it, to me, it's proximity of the easterly building. Uh we are emphatic that this project is as proposed, it's a hundred and twenty-five units. It's more units than we had before you made, rendered your decision last time because you cut us back on the two bedroom units where half our project is, now it's one-third. So two-thirds are studios and one bedrooms. Therefore, uh in, in order to meet the uh requirements of our tenants uh and also this project's economics, we need to increase the number of units to make up for the lost two bedroom units. So we have done that. We're up to, we're allowed to have a hundred and twenty-five units. We're allowed to have three-story buildings. We're allowed to have them within, in this case, sixty feet of the property line. Uh and it would be a hundred and, uh less, less than a hundred and twenty feet from the prop, from the next adjacent building uh on Strawberry Fields. We're exceeding that requirement. Uh it's, it's, it's sixty-one feet in width, the building uh is closest where I told you this dimension. It's sixty-one feet wide, the dimension uh as it's facing towards that building, the closest building at Strawberry Fields. Sixty-one feet in width at the end and it's a hundred and eighty-five feet long as you're going towards Sullivan Avenue. That is, uh that's our, that's our building, the thirty-six unit building, uh and it has studios and one bedroom and two bedroom units in it. Uh so that, that, you know, we have all kinds of options here. It's going to be challenging, but we can work with all parties, all actors in this and come up with a reasonable plan that meets their requirements and the towns as well to meet your requirements or your regulations that you've adopted. We're meeting your regulations in every respect as we're proposing, but the detailed plans are later. So we can put up a fence. We can put up a gate if they want it. It won't, it'll happen unless they want it with a pathway. Uh we can do buffer screening. Uh we can do it with or without the use of the vegetation that's there, depending on what we decide in the field, working with them and the town staff. So we're available. We have three landscape architects here, um and land planners. I'm a land planner. And we can work this out uh in terms of the buffer screening. Uh you have your regulations. We have to meet it in every respect and we are. The commission understood it was three-story buildings in this plan when you adopted these regulations. It doesn't say you can't, you have to have two-story buildings. It says three-story buildings. We're, we're proposing that, three-story buildings. That, we have fewer buildings now uh because we consolidated the buildings and we have a whole new architect from when we presented that plan to you last, uh a year ago, over a year ago. We, we have a new architect, beautiful plans. They give us the footprints. We worked it out, so we have the studios. We have seventeen studios. You required at least ten percent. We exceed that. And we have mostly one-bedroom units and then we have uh I think forty-two two-bedroom units, uh which is only one-third of our project. We originally proposed fifty percent. We can work with you.
Peter, hold, hold on a minute. Elizabeth, did he answer your question or?
Well, let me just respond. Uh, I guess I think he did answer my question and then some, but um I, I, I just wanted to respond by saying that I, I, I'm certainly not suggesting, Mr. Demali, that you've been anything um any less than honest with the residents over there or it, or that you haven't met the letter of, of our regulations. I'm not suggesting that at all uh in regard to the height of the buildings. In regard to the proximity, I think you did answer that about not being able to move that building uh to the north. Um thirdly, I think that, you know, oftentimes residents, um you know, plans don't always sink in and the impact of, of a project may not sink in until a little later. I'm glad to see that you have been meeting with them and there's ongoing talks and it's, and I hope that maybe some of the information you just presented may be cleared up some of the concerns of, of the residents. And I would hope, you seem to be expressing a desire to continue to talk to those residents. And I hope that there will be ongoing talks because they do appear to be, um you know, the most closely impacted by this project. Thanks, Bart.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um I'll turn to Commissioner LeBlanc.
Sure. Uh I'm not going to rehash that one, but uh uh just looking, sorry, now looking ahead, I saw a few of the comments. So there's a few reoccurring themes in these letters and uh one of them is uh having sidewalk access along Sullivan Avenue, especially for access over to Major Donnelly Park. And I could see the issue of people cutting through people's yards over on Zen Lane and all that uh over at uh Strawberry Fields over there and I could see that being problematic. Uh is that something that's been incorporated into the plans? You may have come across this already, but a year went by, so if I could revisit that.
Would you like me to address that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so that, that would be, essentially, we're building, I think it's two hundred and twenty feet of sidewalk connecting to the existing sidewalk you required from uh Phil Turtinus's project, Mexicali Grill. It ends at their property line. We're going to be picking that up and bringing it over to our driveway uh over to the intersection. So that's being picked up. That's about two hundred and twenty feet. We're building over four thousand feet of sidewalk on our property, by the way. Uh and we also um are going to be redoing the intersection, uh the signalization there.
Okay, right in front.
The whole thing for pedestrian safety, um crosswalk, pedestrian buttons, all this stuff, the old modern technology and detection systems that the state of Connecticut will require. We've been told by our traffic engineer who's, I believe, on right now, uh Questy Brown from SLR, that we will be expected to, at great expense, to replace that whole system there and make it safe. So people going from the, most of this, you know, most of the traffic is from north side and then comes over to the south side and then goes along, uh along Sullivan Avenue. So we'll be filling that gap. Now, with respect to going beyond that, as people saying, uh you know, Major Donnelly Preserve and all that stuff, um we have from our driveway to our property line, that's the common property line with Strawberry Fields, is one thousand three hundred and fifty. is one thousand three hundred and fifty lineal feet. That's quite a hike. Of that, all but ninety feet of that has a State of Connecticut guide rail. There's a reason for that. Because if you're familiar with that over there, if you go over to Hot Leathers, you look at the embankment, you'll see Hot Leathers is probably the worst, most pronounced part of it. But it's a, a, a one and a half to one slope. Okay? You can't walk on that. So, so basically, it's, it's less pronounced slope. It's immediately at our driveway. And then it gets steeper and steeper and you're going along. And then it starts leveling off as you get toward the end, toward Strawberry Fields. So it's not quite as steep. But you have at, at, to give you an idea, that's one and a half to one, you can't walk on it and I can't walk on it, in front of Hot Leathers. That's a fifteen-foot drop right there. Okay? So we don't have a shelf for a sidewalk. Okay? All along there, if you look behind it, within the state highway right away, right behind the, the, the guide rail, you have it dropping off almost immediately. So we would, we would have to create a shelf. And the only way to do that is to build a retaining wall system along much of this thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-feet lineal feet of, of, of a new sidewalk to support it because you don't have a shelf for it. So you have to build retaining wall systems and you'd have to create a shelf. And then because it would be a drop-off, I, I call it cliff walk is what this thing would be. Like if you're familiar with Newport, the only thing, without a view and without the surf. I love walking along the, the cliff walk, the ocean cliff walk over there in Newport. But it's without the view and without the surf. So it'd be steep and we'd have to make it safe. And then we'd have to put a fence in the top of it because that would be required because it's building code requirements and the state would require that. And the state won't maintain it. We'd have to maintain it. It, it's cost prohibitive to do it. Let me continue on. As you go down the end of our property, then where does it go? At the end of the line, the guide rail doesn't stop at the, at the property line. The state has to go on it because it's still steep. It goes another two-hundred-and-fifty feet along the frontage of Strawberry Fields property. So you either have people hop over the, the guide rail and get into traffic or you have them go down two-hundred-and-fifty feet along Strawberry Fields and get into traffic. And, and if you start going down there, there's a mile to the next sidewalk in front of Hartford Hospital Building. It's just over a mile. And if you look at what that is, the obstacles to doing that, you know, the, the next, the house after the first frontage, Strawberry Fields is bisected frontage. There are two, two dwellings in between. There's one house that's right up by the street, single family. Yeah, that's their driveway. Where, where are you going to put a sidewalk? That, that's where the car would obstruct people walking through. And, and if you go down to River Walk, there are obstacles. Where do you put it? Where do you stop? I talked to a state official yesterday from Connecticut DOT District One, which looks over this. It'll be an OSTA application. We know that. Mr. Brown revealed that to the commission previously. It'll be an Office of State Traffic Administration application. They'll deal with it. But he said, if you have, first of all, with the costs of, of making a shelf and the retaining walls and stuff, that's, that's, that's a serious issue. But the idea of, of dumping that, those pedestrians into the, the travel, the travelway there, the paved area, to walk along Sullivan Avenue and encouraging that behavior is not a good idea. That's a problem. Another thing is Strawberry Fields has, along its frontage, the fifteen-year growth of these beautiful evergreen trees with branches that start at the floor, at the ground level and work up. We can show you some pictures of that. They, they are in the way. You have to walk around those trees. You either go way to the right into the Strawberry Fields property or you hop the guide rail and go along the street. It's, it's really problematic. It's extremely expensive. We don't have a budget for that. And, and it's, it would take, it would be a marvelous feat of engineering, but what's the point? It seems like if you're going to address that, you address the gaps in your existing sidewalk system that you have. And we already are addressing it.
There are, Peter. Yeah, Sullivan Avenue itself, because I've been reading his letter and I drive down there a lot. There's a lot of gaps along Sullivan Avenue. And my thought is that the long-term part of this town, which is, I think it's, town took a bad turn forty years ago, but all the major roads don't have sidewalks. Whereas you have neighborhoods where nobody drives in, there's sidewalks on both sides of the road. It doesn't make any sense. But I, I get that Sullivan Avenue is going to be a twenty-year process where sidewalks will get at an end little by little. Then at some point, most of the road will be contiguous. But it is a process. I'm aware of that. But part B of this question, and I get your point, Peter, was that if you had direct access through the property or is this being constructed into Major Donnelly, now you're not cutting through the property owners in Strawberry Fields.
We put up a fence. And they won't. Just put up a fence.
I, I get that. But the, the direct access into Major Donnelly is what I'm getting at for the part B of the question. Instead of walking along Sullivan Avenue, if you want to gather by your discussion is that it can't be done. So was that part of the process or is it going to be part of the process? Because this came up about a year ago about having access into there.
That can be addressed if we get to the second round. And that's it. We'd have to be putting it through wetlands, the access way to get over there. So we could go from us through the wetlands, it's all regulated wetlands in there, to the west of downhill from Strawberry Fields. They abut the wetlands. That forty acres was donated by the developer, my client, to the town for the Major Donnelly Preserve to add to the, so it's, there were seventy acres they bought from John Mitchell. And we, we could potentially go through there, but we haven't really vetted that with the Wetlands Commission. We've talked to the town staff about it, but we haven't decided whether or not that's feasible. That's a possibility of having a pathway going over to Major Donnelly from there. It's a great idea, but we can't commit to that right now until we get further into it. So that's another option. Yep, a good idea there. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bernstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be really brief because I want the seated commissioners all to have a chance. We're starting to get low on time here. But I'll just start by saying that I, like most people, believe that this is a needed project. And I would say a desperately needed project. We all want to see that Geysers Plaza improved. The, the thing that's, I guess, stunning to me is the number of people from Strawberry Fields that rode in. And I'll just say, sitting here listening, Peter, to you responding to Elizabeth's question, if I were a resident of Strawberry Fields, you would have convinced me. And I hear that you've met with them, but I think that those conversations should continue. You're a fantastic salesperson and you know your stuff backwards and forwards. I think that you can come to a meeting in the minds with those folks. And to the extent that some of them are just unreasonable, then, you know, we may have to move on. But with that number of people that have voiced concerns about certain things, and they seem to be a couple of themes, I think there's resolution. It can make everyone happy. And everyone seems to be for certainly the retail part of this project. So that's all I have to say. And, Mr. Chair, I'll move on.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. I think it is important to recognize that we're not dealing with a site plan. I had questions about the sidewalks. I think they've been answered. I totally agree you cannot build a sidewalk along Sullivan Avenue on their side of the property. I understand the intersection will link up to sidewalks on the other side, but these don't go as far as we'd like. And I would just point out that on our plan of conservation and development, sidewalks up to Ayers Road are actually a high priority and they aren't there. So at some point, the town would need to address that. It's not part of this project. I would say, you know, it would help the commissioners if we could bring up the drawing, the, the cross-section drawing. And I'll hold it up to my screen just to, so you know what I'm talking about. Maybe that's good enough. I mean, I think personally, with the national buffering and everything, that's a pretty good barrier. I mean, the, the windows of the Strawberry Fields residents are actually mostly below the level of that berm. If that's the way you're really going to build it. So I think the, the fears maybe are not quite as well-founded as, as they should be. You know, I understand people are concerned, but I think those fears will prove not to be an issue, especially when the barriers are properly addressed. I'd want to make sure you, when you come with a site plan, that you address the, you know, make sure the clubhouse and pool are adequately screened from the, from the buildings. It's a site plan issue. I think the issue with children is really minor. And we've had plenty of data provided to us to suggest that. And that was considered in our design, this, this, Sam, the regulation, the design regulation that we're applying for. I think maybe when we're doing the traffic light, we look at coordination of that traffic light with others so that it's a little easier for the people to get out of Strawberry Fields. Again, that's not on this project, but maybe we can do something with traffic lights up and down Sullivan Avenue to improve that situation. I think it's a great project. I would not ask them to reduce the height of the buildings. And I don't see how they can move the buildings. So I think you really got to decide that the buffering is adequate or make sure it is adequate. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Flag.
Yeah, I had a question on the building. How many buildings are going to have elevators, Peter?
Just what we will call Building C going from left to right, the one in the middle, the bigger one. That will have, that's forty-one units. That will have the elevator that you requested at the prior hearings.
Okay. That sort of limits ADA people, doesn't it? Because they won't travel up to the third floor in the other buildings, right?
Well, we have, I think it's sixty-nine? Yeah, over half of our units are handicapped accessible. So you can roll right in. We have no stairs to any of the buildings. So all first floors are available, plus the second, first, second and third floor in the forty-one unit building. So we're, we're much higher, we're, we're much higher than normal accessibility. So yeah, there will be, you know, three of the buildings, the second and third floor, which are the smaller three buildings. You won't, you, they're going to be young, young workforce people. You know, people my age are not going to rent there or your age for that matter. So we're, you're younger than I am right now. But, but we should, we, we certainly recognize that. But we, we made it, and by the way, Tim Wentz, our architect from Gate Seventeen, who's one of the foremost residential architects in the Northeast. He insisted that we have a full handicapped accessibility. In other words, not a single stair going into any of our four buildings and our clubhouse building, not a single stair. So that's why we did that. Other architects have different interpretations of the code. He said, no, we're going to make it all handicapped accessible. So you can have any of the four buildings, you get a first floor if you have issues with climbing stairs.
Peter, Peter, I'd like to get to commissioners' questions, please.
Okay. I think I answered your question?
Yes, it did. My other question was, on the first floor of all of these buildings, are they all going to be residences? Or are you going to have retail in them also?
All four residential buildings are one-hundred percent retail, or residential. We, we dismissed the first floor commercial from the westerlymost building early on.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Dexter, please.
Okay, I would like to shift gears a little bit and talk, talk about the affordable component, Peter.
Okay.
I think you and Michelle have had a brief conversation. I'm a little disappointed in the intent and spirit of our ten percent affordable component regulation and how it's being used here. I do appreciate that ten percent of one-twenty-five is twelve-point-five and you've rounded up to thirteen. Thank you. But to have them all be studios, I think it really should be ten percent across the three apartment sizes. So two.
Five sizes.
Oh, oh, five? Thought there were three.
Well, some have dens, some don't.
Oh, well, I'm just talking studio, one bedroom, two bedroom. Okay? So instead of thirteen studios affordable out of seventeen, it would be two, right? Ten percent of seventeen. You, you can do the math. I just think when we see the site plan, I would like to have you guys go back to the drawing board on that and do, do a little better. The other thing I just want to talk about real quickly is the overall parking area and drop-off area for these apartment buildings. I know that Amazon Prime stops at my house every day. And I can imagine folks, you know, everywhere, just having a lot of deliveries, people moving in and out. Will there be any loading zones? It's hard for me to tell from these plans.
We're providing, we're providing adjacent to the clubhouse complex packaged delivery areas centralized. They will, and indeed, Bob Reitbeck indicated that there's potential for having even refrigerated units so that you could have your groceries delivered. So when you get home from work or visiting or whatever, you can come and pick them up and just get them there. So there's going to be Amazon, FedEx, UPS, all those deliveries will be done to a centralized location. And so you don't, they don't have to go to your residence and ring the doorbell, whatever. And that'll probably be controlled access anyways. And then, and then it'll be locked and even some will have refrigerated. So Geysers could go over there and fill up your locker with whatever you desire in your order, including refrigerated items. And then they'll be waiting for you when you get home.
There you go. Thank you very much. That's it.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Mr. Banzeni.
Yeah, you know, a lot of the questions have been answered. A couple of neighbors, Peter, mentioned that the side of the building that's facing Strawberry Fields.
Yes.
Is there going to be windows? Will there be windows so that, like a couple of neighbors said, they can be sitting in their living room and overlooking like them, you know, in their backyard? Is that, is that feasible or is, is that, you know what I'm saying? Because I mean, a hundred and twenty feet is not very far. If somebody's looking out a bedroom window and, and they, you know, looking over a neighborhood. Or do you think they can actually see whether you buffer there in your honest opinion? Or you think it'll be, basically what I'm saying is, you know, some of the neighbors are concerned about, you know, being in their own driveways and, you know, people be able to see them. Hundred and twenty feet is pretty close.
Yeah, so at the end of that.
What's your honest opinion would be for that?
So at the end of that building, it's sixty-one feet in width. There are three levels. One, the first floor is no issue at all, and the second and third floors. There, those are the bedrooms, bedroom windows. We had our architect, Tim Wentz, I believe he's on, he could participate if you like. He had a, a single window, I believe, for each unit. And the Architectural Design Review Committee requested that he address that. Maybe Tim can, can talk right now or run out of time. Are you going, stopping at nine-thirty?
We're trying to stop as close as possible to nine-thirty, but we're going to get through all the commissioners' questions.
Okay, okay, well.
But the idea is to get through the commissioners' questions.
Okay, Mr. Wentz, at the last, the first public hearing we had on April thirteenth, he presented a new elevation beyond what we've originally submitted in response to Architectural Design Review Committee. And the windows were beefed up on that end. So I think there are double windows for each bedroom of the, of the six units at that end, two per floor. And those are the bedroom windows. So he did that at the request of Architectural Design Review, which is a bunch of mostly architects that you have appointed as, as making recommendations. So we did, he did that. So it does have windows on that end and they're all bedroom windows.
No, but I'm more worried about the people at Strawberry Fields, somebody looking out the windows of the new apartments, being able to see them, you know, in their backyards with privacy. You know, if you're in your own, own house, own yard, you want definitely privacy in your honest opinion. Are they going to be able to see them, you know, doing what they're doing in their backyards? Or do you think that the, the foliage and the barrier is going to be?
Over, over time, it will be completely obscured, the entire building, over time, as everything matures. But it, it's, you know, initially, it'll be the first two floors basically, and then the third floor over time. It, it takes a little time to do it. And your regulations say, we look at it at five years out and we look at it at maturity. So, and we can work with you and with them to beef it up as much as possible and, and, and come up with something that's even better in a faster timeframe.
Yeah.
And there are no pa, no patios or balconies are facing that end, by the way. They're all on the sides, around the sides. There's nothing on that end.
It would just be the six bedroom windows or in the second and third floors at the most. But I just don't like the fact that people, you know, Strawberry Fields would be losing a lot of privacy. You know, a hundred and twenty feet is not very far. But I know we're getting close to time, Bart. So, yeah, I'd like to see if we could do something, maybe like you said, a fence or something so they can't see into there. But like you said, that's something that you and them would have to get together. Some of the other commissioners have already discussed what we could do for something like that. But.
There are many options.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Many options.
Okay. I just want to echo the concerns of Commissioner Dexter regarding the affordable units. They should involve every type of unit that you have and across the board. So a couple of studios, seven one-bedrooms, four two-bedrooms.
I, I'd like to respond to that if I may.
No, when I'm done.
Okay.
Sidewalk on Sullivan Avenue. I really think we need to figure something out there. I really think we need to figure something out there, whether it be with state of Connecticut, whatever. But uh. This is our one bite of the apple. When this place is getting developed, so uh something has to happen. Uh, next thing I have is. There's a lot of concern for the Strawberry Fields people regarding the buffer. What I'd like to see happen eventually is. The fifty-foot area get cleaned up, vines removed. And uh dead trees removed, and then we place a conservation easement. From the property lying twenty-five foot into the property. And uh keep as much as possible there. You know, I, I understand what the neighbors are saying. Uh, originally, I think the first plan that was shown, the closest building, I think, was around two hundred feet. Away from the closest building for Strawberry Fields. Then I think uh the applicant secured another piece of property and buildings got moved around. Um, or that's what I'm thinking happened, and now you end up like a hundred and twenty feet away. That's kind of like, originally, we asked for studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. And now we see on some of the units, there's a one bedroom plus a den. And there's a two bedroom plus a den. While it might fit in with the regulations, I think. You're taking advantage of the regulations in that respect. Studios, uh, I'm sorry, dens were never discussed as part of any of our discussions. In going through um. Changing the regulations. Um, so I, I think that's a little disingenuous. I'm wondering if this site is gonna end up being a site neutral for dirt? Is, that's a yes or no question?
No.
Okay. Eventually, uh, they'll be queuing on the driveway, but that's more site plan. The traffic signal at Sullivan, from what I understand, is gonna get addressed. But there's also. Um, what I think is a need for a pedestrian phase at the light at Ayers also. You've got four hundred square feet of recreation per unit to be met through the active recreation. And from what I understand, you're taking credit for part of the buffer. As far as your recreation. Which, again. You're taking advantage of the regulations in that respect. Building number three, Jeff Doolittle had suggested rotating the building ninety degrees. And I'm wondering what materials will make up the retaining walls, but um, again. That's something we can address with a site plan, but uh maybe. You can elaborate on what Jeff had suggested in his comments of moving building number. Rotating building number three ninety degrees. And I'm, I'm bringing this up now because you're in the design phase now. And, you know, if I get to a site plan and we're talking about this, then you've designed all your septic and everything else or your. Your uh waste pipes and everything else, so. Can you address that?
Uh, with the ninety degrees, uh, we'd be glad to revisit that. Uh, you're obviously gonna have to continue the hearing for us to address these things. Um, so we, we'd be prepared to address that when we come back. Um, I, I, I would like to address. Um, the den, den slash office issue. Um, I can do it now or I can do it the next hearing, uh, as you like.
It is getting late, Peter.
I could do it in two minutes. I can address the den slash offices if you like, two minutes.
Okay, you gonna tell me about your New Jersey architect?
He's right on, if you want to hear from him. Uh, but I, I can just summarize a couple of points that I think would be of interest to you. Uh, sixteen of the eighteen that Mr. Wentz has designed of these, their offices are dens. It's a preference of the tenant. Um, sixteen of the eighteen are in the one bedroom units. Uh, the demand for offices is increased during COVID nineteen. Everybody wants to have an office within their unit. Um, and uh also, we have only two uh of these uh dens or offices are in the two bedroom units. Uh, and that's only in the twelve unit building. Uh, none are in the studio units. Only uh uh of, of the units, only uh twelve of the eighteen units do not have windows. Okay, um, none of them have closets. They do not meet a definition of a bedroom, for example, not even close. Uh, and uh, they're all in, if I stand correctly, corrected with Mr. Wentz, I believe they're all on second and third floors. Um, that, that's where they are. So they're, by and large, they're mostly without windows. None of them have closets. They're smaller than any of the bedrooms. They're meant to be an office or den. It's a choice of the tenant. They either want one or they don't want an office. Basically, and that becomes a den. Uh, and uh, that's because that's a marketplace today. People want to have a small office. And I have one in my house, you know, and, and you're working remotely. I, a lot of people are working remotely. They need to have a place to. To work during the day or at night, whenever they choose to work or have to work. You know, they, they ju- they just have to have that, and that's, that's today's marketplace. And we're not trying to skirt the issue, the, the regulations at all for that. You know, these, these are generally windowless um you, uh, spaces uh for your office, and if you don't want an office, it's a little den. Um, and they're not, not having closets, they're not even remotely a bedroom. So, just thought I'd bring that to your attention. Mr. Wentz is on. If you want to address it, we can address it next time. It's up to you. Your call.
No, I, I pretty much, um, we've got some people that gotta go work early tomorrow morning, so. What I'd like to do is continue the public hearing to our next normal date in May. Uh, so uh, I would accept the motion stating such.
Motion to continue. Uh, the hearing, uh, May, what's the next date, Michelle?
It would be May eleventh.
May seventh?
May eleventh.
Eleven.
May eleventh, okay. Motion to continue the uh. Hearing on application uh uh twenty-one dash eleven P to uh May the eleventh.
Okay, we have motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you in two week, uh, several weeks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um. If we could, commissioners, um, ten minutes to finish up. Could I have a motion to extend past nine thirty?
I'll make a motion. We extend ten minutes to nine fifty.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, uh, I'll open a regular meeting of the. Uh, planning and zoning for Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, first item on our agenda is public participation. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on something that is not on our agenda? Uh, now would be the time. Uh, do we have? Nobody? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I'll move into our new business. We have application twenty-one dash nineteen P, Town of South Windsor Farmer's Market. Uh, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve. Application twenty-one dash nineteen P, Town of South Windsor Farmer's Market. Request for a two-year temporary conditional permit, operates farmer's market weekly from May twenty-second. September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, on property located at two twenty Nevers Road, RR Zone.
Okay, it, um, you have. You've got conditions, right, Bill? They're on the back of Michelle's sheet. If you want, I'll read them and you could just agree to them.
Okay.
Okay, um. Number one, the two ye- year temporary conditional permit will expire on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Number two, the market will be held weekly on Saturdays from May twenty-second to September. Twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Setup will begin at eight AM and the market will run nine AM to twelve PM. Future dates for the twenty twenty-two farmer's market must be submitted to the planning department. Number three, the health department must be consulted and proper permits obtained for vendors. Selling or providing food at the market. Number four, if there are building structures, signs, or other items that require a building permit or other town approval. Uh, permits, all such permits or approvals must be obtained prior to construction. Uh, or use of site. Number five, all freestanding signs and or building signs, temporary or permanent. Require the issuance of a sign permit before they are erected. Those are all the conditions. Bill, you, you uh agree with that motion?
Yes.
Okay, and our second, I believe it was Stephanie?
Second, yes.
Okay. Um, any discussion, people?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I think we should re. Require them to use the uh existing curb cut.
Okay, so Bill, you'll make that.
Let me finish. I got a couple more items. Maybe just get them all. Uh, I think we also should ensure ADA access and parking. Are as close as possible to the vendors. And I would like to uh provide um a dirt uh path for bicycle access.
Okay. Are you good with all those, Bill?
Yes.
So that would be six, seven, and eight?
Right.
You got that, Michelle?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, and Stephanie? Uh, you're seconding now?
I'm okay with that. Second, yes.
Okay. So. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed? Um, and I have to apologize, commissioners. Uh, did I seat anybody for Commissioner Foley?
Yeah, it's for me.
Michael.
Michael.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Just want to remember. Okay. Did I call our vote? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, those opposed? No nays, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and. Uh, Baylor Brothers is uh asked to be on a future agen- agenda. Um, we have a couple bonds. Does anybody have them available? And can move a motion?
Who are you calling?
Commissioner Wagner.
Uh, I move. We uh approve a reduction of the inland wetlands authority conservation commission bond. On application fifteen fifty-seven P, Mike and Tony's uh E and S bond. An amount of three thousand dollars, reducing by three thousand dollars, leaving a balance of zero.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And I move that we uh reduce the subdivision bond on application twenty dash zero four P, Chestnut Ridge subdivision. Uh, the original bond in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, reducing it by two hundred and seventy-five. Thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars, leaving a balance of eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and ten dollars.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. One more thing, we have minutes from four twenty twenty-one. Um, I just had one thing on page thirteen. The last paragraph before number five. Uh, which is, number five was application twenty-one dash sixteen P. Uh, Commissioner LeBlanc made a motion to extend the meeting past nine thirty PM, not nine PM, I believe. If, if I'm correct, so uh, I believe I am. So, um, we can adopt these minutes by consensus if everyone agrees?
Yes.
I'm seeing the nod, okay. Okay, um, Michelle, do you have anything quick or?
No, I, I don't have anything further at this time, other than just everybody got the note about we are gonna be back in person hopefully for our May. Meeting, but twenty-fifth meeting.
Which one?
Would be May twenty-fifth, would be the first day. That we need to be slated to come into town hall.
Okay, and when's, when's Lauren's last day?
Lauren will be uh with you on May eleventh and again on May eighteenth, covering our meetings. She's here in the background right now.
I don't hear her. I don't see her.
Some of the attendees. We'll, we'll make sure she comes on, on the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, so commissioners, a motion to adjourn would be in order? Okay, I think I have Commissioner Flag on that, and I think I have Commissioner Dexter on the second. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good week.